Good evening. It's so great to see everybody tonight. Thanks for being here. I would like to call the school board meeting for Tuesday, November 12th, 2024, for the Des Moines Public Schools to order. Ms. Rios, could you please take the roll?
Yes. Ms. Alonso?
Here.
Ms. Campos?
Present.
Mr. Dix?
Here.
Ms. Knox?
Ms. Martorano?
Here.
Mr. Mayberry Mace?
Here.
Ms. Norris?
Here.
We have quorum.
The first item of business is approval of the agenda. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
Martorano, so moved.
Dix, second.
We have a motion by Ms. Martorano and a second by Mr. Dix. Is there any discussion or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your votes. Ms. Knox? Approved. The agenda is passed seven to zero. Next on the agenda is the public forum. We provide speakers at the forum an opportunity to address the board for up to three minutes regarding items that are not on the board agenda and up to five minutes for an agenda item. If anyone wishes to speak during any portion of the business meeting, please email rosa.rios@dm schools.org. The same speaking protocols apply to all individuals who wish to address the board. Speakers will be called individually and we ask they state their name and address prior to providing comments. Students and minors do not have to provide their addresses. Guests of the board are encouraged to speak to matters relating to the programs, services, and operations of DMPS. Please remember that Iowa law prohibits us from discussing specific employees or their job performance. We ask all speakers to avoid references to personalities or character attacks as those types of comments do not contribute to the purpose for which this public forum exists. The use of inappropriate language will not be tolerated and individuals choosing to do so will be gavelled out of order and asked to excuse themselves from the premises or escorted out by district security. As a reminder to the board and public, the board will not engage in a discussion with public forum speakers as it is our obligation to discuss only matters posted in the public agenda for the sake of transparency and opportunity afforded to all community stakeholders. Matters requiring attention will receive appropriate staff and/or board follow-up at a time after the meeting. Thanks for your participation. We appreciate your feedback and input. Ms. Rios, do we have any speakers for the public forum?
Yes, we do. First up, Annie Brandt. May I approach the podium?
Here. Hi, I'm Annie Brandt. My address is 3825 River Oaks Drive in Des Moines. Has my time started? Yeah, okay. I initially thought banning cell phones seemed unnecessary. I didn't realize how much it was impacting students until they were no longer allowed. My kids have actually enjoyed handing their phones in. They feel that less time is spent in class with teachers telling kids to get off their phones. My kids have not complained once about not having their phones and the one time I did need to reach my child, I called the office and she called back within five minutes. I absolutely believe this is a step in the right direction. This is from a parent with two children at Brody Middle School. Good evening, members of the school board, faculty, and fellow community members. Today, I'd like to address an important issue that affects the learning environment in our schools: the use of cell phones in the classroom. I am not coming to you with a campaign against cell phones and this is not a campaign against social media. I'll save that for another time. While cell phones are an integral part of our lives, it's becoming increasingly clear that their presence in educational settings is disrupting the focus and effectiveness of both students and teachers. We know that unlimited access to phones is not positive for students or for teachers. First and foremost, cell phones are a significant distraction. This distraction undermines their ability to absorb information and diminishes the quality of the educational experience. The classroom is a place for focused learning where students should be engaged in the materials presented, participating in discussions, and developing critical thinking skills. However, when students are allowed to use their phones, it's far too easy for them to become distracted, whether it's by social media, texting, gaming, or scrolling. Another parent with a student at Calanan Middle School shared with me, "I believe we are behind the curve on the topic of banning cell phones from the classroom. They've been proven to be a distraction as well as bad for mental health. I believe they can be a safety hazard as well when students are able to record and then talk during the school day about things happening outside the classroom." My middle schooler has shared with me that she would prefer to talk with her friends at lunchtime, but it's hard when everyone's on their phones. When I talk with other DMPS parents about the topic, they're resoundingly on board with the cellphone ban and even believe it's already on track to happen since the conversation was started last spring. It is clear that a policy restricting cellphone use in the classroom is necessary. By adopting such a policy, the district would send a strong message about prioritizing the quality of education and the importance of supporting teachers so that they can teach. Schools in various districts, both across the country and right here in central Iowa, have already implemented successful cellphone use policies and the results speak for themselves: higher engagement, better academic performance, and more positive social interactions. I urge the district to put a policy in place that restricts cellphone usage in the classroom. We are fortunate to have several examples of successful building policies within the district, so let's start there. I encourage you to put a policy in place that allows building administrators to learn from their peers, take time to do the research, and implement systems that make the most sense for their buildings. It's time to create a learning environment where teachers are fully supported and students are fully present, focused on their education, and engaged in meaningful interactions with their peers and their teachers. By doing so, we can help our students reach their full potential and ensure that our schools remain centers of academic excellence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jen Sand.
Hi, I'm Jen Sand. Can I decline to share my address publicly? I'm a practicing psychologist, so... But I am a practicing psychologist and I'm a mother of two DMPS students, and I support limiting student cellphone usage at DMPS. Research links higher cellphone use to laundry list of psychological impacts that I think we can all probably agree we would not want for our students: higher rates of loneliness, self-harm, suicidality, and depressive symptoms. And they also open the door to greater cyberbullying. I can only imagine if, you know, the impact of social media had I grown up with cellphones and the impact, you know, socially. There was a psychologist, a social psychologist that I listened to in preparation for this, Jonathan Haidt, and he wrote a book, The Anxious Generation, and he talks about how students need these little micro-moments of taking risks socially and seeing the feedback with each other, and that's how we learn how to be together as a collective and that with cellphones, students are, as you so eloquently put, you know, not hanging out at lunchtime together. They're looking down at their phones. They're not seeing the feedback eye to eye when they might, you know, make a mistake and say something that doesn't go over well and their friend can just casually say like, "Ooh, no, doesn't sound very good." And so, we're cutting down not only on attention for learning, which is obviously a huge important piece of what you're doing at DMPS, but you're also having a significant impact socially, and the students need that, need that time. So, you might say, "Well, why not encourage students to decrease the rate of their usage on their own?" But this is hard for adults, even myself, to regulate my cellphone use, and I like to think that I'm fully coordinated. But students are, take till about age 25, till they have their full prefrontal cortex, which is the part of their brain that is going to help them make decisions and have more impulse control. So, in my opinion, it's a very difficult position to put students in to regulate that use themselves. And the impact is that, you know, when my cellphone is in my pocket, I have this continuous divided attention. Even if I'm not looking at it, I'm thinking about, "Is it going to go off? Is it not?" And so, I can't fully engage with what is in front of me and what I'm doing. And I have had teacher clients as well, and I have, through that lens, experienced the increasing crunch on teachers and the difficult positions they're put in. And I can, I'm just trying to put myself in their shoes, but it seems like a difficult role to put them in, to ask them to be the frontline and supporting students from their cellphones.
Sorry, I'm not sure.
Am I over time?
Nope, you are perfectly timed.
Okay.
You're still timed.
So, for many students, it can feel kind of like an addiction, basically. And so, to have teachers be in the position to sort of like intervene in students' addiction is very different. I mean, I have a hard time myself and that's literally what I'm there to do, is talk to folks about their addictive tendencies. And teachers are, you know, may or not be trained to do that kind of thing. So, paradoxically, in conclusion, I think that by setting thoughtful limits on students' cellphone use, you actually give students more freedom to be themselves, to be children, to not have to be making that decision constantly about whether to reach into their pocket and grab their phone, which is taking them away from learning and away from their peers. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker is Rob Sand.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Nice to see you all. I'm here as a parent with two students in DMPS, one eight and one 10. They don't have phones yet. At some point, they'll force us to get them for them. We're hoping that all of this is resolved in a positive way before we get there. And we know from talking to other students and even talking to them because their peers have phones, their peers with phones, they have a harder time connecting with, they have a harder time talking to. I think one of the important things one of the previous speakers talked about is the addictiveness. One of the reasons that we know that these things are so addictive is because of an Iowan, Francis Haugen, who was a Facebook employee who leaked the Facebook files. And study after study, done internally through Instagram and Facebook, very clearly showed that the devices were addictive, that the apps were addictive, and that the folks who make them want them to be addictive, right? And these are, this is happening to our kids at the time that their plasticity is so high for their brains. And if we allow them to continue to use them when we know they have these addictive devices in their pocket, right, we may as well be saying, "Well, let's just let them smoke cigarettes because if they don't want to, then they won't and it'll be okay for them." Right? I mean, they're, at the end of the day, addictive devices designed to be addictive. I think there, I hear so, from so many teachers on this subject who just, they want to teach and they want their students to learn. And with the phones in the classroom all day long, it becomes something that is incredibly distracting. And I've heard from a lot of teachers who say, "I feel like I'm speaking to an empty room sometimes." So, I think you're going to hear from a lot of parents tonight. I hope you will all be supportive of instituting a ban district-wide because we think this is a very important time to step up. I've only been able to find one district anywhere in the country that had a ban and did anything to back off of that ban at any point. Every other one that I've seen has instituted something and has kept it in place because it's been effective. Even if there's a few weeks of people being frustrated, it's basically them breaking their addiction to get to the point where they can then refocus and be happy with what they're doing. So, I hope you'll be supportive. I think this is an important time for Des Moines to say, "Yes, the evidence is clear. We don't need to wait. What we need to do is protect our kids." Thanks.
Thank you. Ryan Howell?
Hello. Ryan Howell, 831 16th Street. I won't repeat everything everybody else has been saying, but I am here to lend my voice to a restriction and advocating for a restriction on cellphone use in the public schools. I have four children in Des Moines Public School system, and I'm also a youth coach. I coach multiple soccer teams. And I want to build on, you know, as a, from the coach lens, which is similar in a much smaller sense than a teacher's lens, having to put the teachers in the position of regulating this class by class, child by child, is untenable. And I think putting a restriction district-wide for our teachers is consistent with the mission of Des Moines Public Schools, to create a healthy and safe environment for all of our students. So, I ask you to lean into the research on this topic and to consider restricting it district-wide for the sake of our kids and our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the speakers that I have signed up. Last call.
We will now move to the consent agenda. As a reminder to the board and public, the board will not engage in discussion or deliberation with a speaker regarding comments made to agenda items. Discussion and deliberation will remain among board members at the board table with speakers' comments informing the board's discussion, deliberation, and determinations as deemed necessary. Ms. Rios, do we have any speakers?
No speakers for consent, but we do have district recognitions, perhaps?
I think that would be wonderful. Should we recognize some people, Dr. Roberts?
Yes, we.
And then we'll come back and do consent agenda voting.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to recognize the work that is happening both in and out of the classrooms. At every board meeting, we celebrate the success and accomplishments of our students, staff, and leaders for not only their academic pursuits, but certainly for some of their endeavors and engagements outside of the classroom. This evening, board and community, I'm happy to share two district recognitions. The first is a recognition that I'm proud to share because it really speaks to and echoes the fact that the students who are enrolled in the Des Moines Public Schools are not only academically inclined, but demonstrate many artistic and athletic powers. Three of our high schools will be represented at this week's state swimming and diving championship. Our congratulations go out to all of these student athletes for qualifying for the state meet, and they are, and when I call their names, if you are an alum of their schools, please hold your applause and cheers. Representing North Polar Bears will be Haley Winehammer, who qualified for the 50 meters freestyle and the 100 meter backstroke. Competing for the Lincoln Rails will be Samantha Dudes in the 100 meter backstroke and her teammate Haley Schaefer in the 100 meter breaststroke. Additionally, the Lincoln Rails 200 meter medley relay team will represent us at the state championship. And finally, from the Roosevelt Roughriders, their 200 meters freestyle relay team will be swimming at this year's state meet. The state swimming championship is going to be held this Friday and Saturday in Marshall Town. Congratulations and best wishes to our student athletes. The next celebration is one that goes out to those individuals who show up every single day to ensure that the students who knock on the doors of our schools receive a quality education: our principals, teachers, and all of our staff. We saw earlier today, the Iowa Department of Education release their school performance profiles. This is where every single school in the state receives a designation based on a number of indicators, which includes student attendance as well as academic outcomes. This is truly a celebration and it's not just a recognition. Carver Elementary and Edmonds Elementary School went from receiving the highest levels of state support over the last three years due to some outcomes that were not necessarily up to par to now being designated as not needing any form of support. Additionally, Monroe Elementary School also improved their overall scores, and they are being removed from the restricted comprehensive designation to only having a targeted designation. And essentially, what the targeted designation is, it means that while the school is doing well academically, in many areas, they are very specific or target groups of students that still need to have improvements. Additionally, 15 of our elementary schools in all had previously been identified as either comprehensive or targeted student, targeted student groups. And now, they no longer need those supports because their scores have increased or exceeded the measures that existed in those very specific state designations. There are other DMPS schools who are relatively close, either close to or similar to these celebrations, but it is clear to us that while we have areas in which we need to grow and get better, this bodes well for what is to come. We have dedicated and high-quality instructional deliverers, if you may, or teachers, school leaders, as well as the district leaders who support them. We certainly recognize and acknowledge that there's still much work for us to do, but this certainly is encouraging to the heart, and we will continue to press forward and stop at nothing until 100% of our schools no longer have such a designation. Madam Chair, this concludes this evening's district recognitions. And for those of you who are in the boardroom this evening or if you are listening online, if you haven't already listened to the latest edition of the podcast that is fastly becoming the best educational podcast in the land, the Become Here Project, our own DMPS podcast, please be sure to download it for some great listening. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The best. Sign up. And congratulations to all of the schools. It's a big accomplishment. Mr. Dix, I believe you have the consent motion?
I do. I move that the board approve the consent items in accordance with the recommended action for each item on the consent agenda, including bills previously authorized, certified, and approved for payment by the board secretary in the amount of $6,920,833.92 and procurement card transactions in the amount of $588,654.1.
Is there a second?
Martorano, second.
We have a motion by Mr. Dix and a second by Ms. Martorano. Is there any discussion or questions? Board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved seven to zero. Now, we have one item under other business. The item is public petition, limiting cellphone usage during the school day at DMPS. For background, in the 2021 legislative session, Governor Reynolds signed House File 868 into law. The new law creates Iowa Code Section 279.8B.I., which outlines the process for eligible voters within the school district to petition their local school board. A viable petition has been accepted by DMPS for board discussion. The full petition can be found on board docs. I am going to read you the two key paragraphs. The petition states as follows, "We, the undersigned, propose the Des Moines Public Schools district develop and implement a universal K through 12 bell-to-bell policy to ban cellphone use by students and restrict usage by teachers in its schools during the school day." The conclusion is, "We, the undersigned, propose the Des Moines Public School Board vote to adopt and that the superintendent and staff develop and implement a universal K through 12 bell-to-bell ban on cellphone use in its schools as soon as possible to ensure a better learning environment for our children." So now, board members, I'd like to entertain a motion that the board consider the public petition on a universal cellphone policy.
Dix, so moved.
Alonso, second.
We have a motion by Mr. Dix and a second by Ms. Alonso. Board members, as I thought about the way we'd use this time, I think the first round will have clarifying questions. So, if people want to ask clarifying questions of Dr. Roberts or questions in general about the topic, and then after everybody's had a chance to ask questions, then we'll come back and get a sense of board sentiment on this topic. Who would like to be the first to share?
I'll go ahead. I'll go ahead and go first with the first couple of questions I have. I did do like a little poll on my Facebook, and just to talk to my community and see what they were for, I did get both sides. Two concerns that our families had was how would this affect kids with IEPs or medical conditions? And then, safety is a whole, another hard question that they have. So, those are the two that I kind of want to see what our plans would be and how would that look like. And then, the third one was contact with their kids. We know sometimes our phone system in our schools work and some schools they don't, just depending on the area. So, that's the three concerns that my family's had. And, but for the most part, everybody was for it.
Dr. Roberts, do you want to address how Hoover is currently handling those issues?
Thank you. Thank you, board members. Certainly, in terms of how not only Hoover, but every other high school in the district addresses how we support students with IEPs, it's pretty much the same way or to the same extent with if you support all of our students. When we think of a student who has an IEP, this is a student who certainly is designated as having a disability on the public law, 94142, which means that they need some additional supports and modifications of accommodations. We do not have any flexibility other than to make sure that we are in compliance with the law if there is an accommodation that the student needs. As a long-serving special educator, I have not seen any IEP that suggests that a student may need to have possession of their cellphone to support that. So, there's no real sort of standout action that has to be taken around our cellphone mental health movement and how that impacts students with IEPs. The second concern with regards to safety is one that even as we continue to keep our finger on the pulse of our movement towards district-wide cellphone updated guidelines, we certainly hear that wonder and concern. But we believe that the investment that the board and superintendent has made in terms of ensuring that we are hardening all of our physical spaces, but also making sure that there's a commitment to every aspect of safety in the district. We don't necessarily anticipate that having a district-wide cellphone guidance will mitigate or diminish how important it is a focus for us on safety.
If I could ask a follow-up on that, because I think you brought up mental health issues as well. I feel like anecdotally, I've heard that Hoover High School, when, if a student needs their phone for some type of medicine tracking, or I've heard diabetes or different ways that people need to track health conditions, there are exceptions made.
There are, and that is not only applicable to Hoover High School, but will be applied sort of throughout the district. I certainly want to offer, and for some, it's probably a matter of semantics and we are using the term cellphone ban. We are never, ever going to use the word cellphone ban in any of our schools, right? Ban, just by its very definition, suggests that, for example, there will be no exceptions. Our approach to ensuring that we're moving steadily towards a district-wide sort of update on cellphone guidelines is essentially anchored in the fact that we too recognize that a reduction of student screen time and even access to their cellphones throughout the day certainly will lead to improvement around many of our indicators that we are already seeing at Hoover High School. So, certainly, medical conditions, there will be an exception as needed.
Ms. Knox?
Principal Kelly shared some incredible data around sort of Q1 findings at Hoover with their mental health movement and limiting cellphone usage. A lot of it around students' sense of belonging going up 7%, emotional regulation 5%. A lot of really great student data that shows improvements. I'm just curious, from a teacher perspective and the staff perspective, and we heard that reference with some of the speakers, if you could share a little of how staff are feeling and kind of what they're seeing and if they've seen any improvement that we should consider.
Yeah, thank you, Board Member Knox. I'm certainly, you know, we have shared earlier, while we are looking at this sort of evaluation of the Hoover High School mental health movement, what we've heard from a number of teachers are testimonials that includes, "We should have done this a long time ago." "I feel as if I can teach now." And the third and final one that I share is, you know, teachers are saying that they now have sort of more opportunities created for them to engage in meaningful and healthy conversations with students who are not distracted by their cellphones. So, those early indicators, the data that you're sharing, certainly the team and I are fully aware of these, and we will continue to consider them as we move towards finalizing our evaluation period. Yeah.
Ms. Martorano?
Thank you. I am curious, you mentioned the evaluation period. That is something that you identified at the beginning of the school year, that you were going, you and your leadership team were going to take time to review data, review the research around this. I'm curious where you're at in that process and what your findings have been. And then, my second question is around the resources necessary to implement this particular type of, can you help me with the correct terminology if we're not used?
Can you help me with the correct terminology if we're not using ban restrictions? Is that the word that we're using?
No. Or we can use, there are two things. One, the mental health movement, because we want to prioritize actually students' mental health as we're thinking about the pivots we're making. Or we can certainly use, if we're thinking about a much more technical term, is either an update, guidance, or a policy.
Okay.
But not a ban.
So, thank you. I'm curious about the resources necessary to implement this mental health movement system-wide, not only from the standpoint of human resources, but any additional resources. And what would the district individual buildings be giving up in order to accomplish this movement?
Thank you, board member Marterano. I'll start with the last question, and that is, what resources are we likely to see either an increase with, or will there be opportunities where we need to reallocate resources? As it stands, there are no concerns at all, but more investment in terms of financial resources. What we are being thoughtful about is what it's going to take from a tactical standpoint, which means resource allocation in terms of personnel. Who will do what in order for us to ensure that we are implementing the shifting guidelines or improving the mental health movement in a manner that truly allows us to maintain the momentum around high-quality teaching and learning? And what that means is, we don't want to have a policy or guideline in place where teachers have to invest an inordinate amount of time, pausing, stopping, being interrupted, to address maybe a recalcitrant student who does not want to give up his or her cellphone. So the resource reallocation that we envision is one where we need to have either more administrators or non-instructional staff supporting buildings and supporting the practice. Again, finger is still on the pulse of what that means for us as we continue to look at what is happening at Hoover High School and some of our other high schools, right, who have relatively solid movements thus far. In terms of where I am, you know, my position remains the same, and I want to highlight and reiterate for the board and to the benefit of the community, three areas where I stood and I still stand. And one is, there is the necessity for, and it would behoove us to have, a district-wide set of guidelines around cellphone usage, right? Not only is there compelling data, but we believe that as we think about what are ways for us to sort of increase, dramatically increase, student engagement in our instructional programs, cellphones are one of the biggest distractions. Secondly, we have shared, as with any other major decision, any district-wide decision, we want to rely on credible and sort of up-to-date data that will drive and guide the decisions that we're making. And that includes quantitative, qualitative, empirical data that's reliable. And the third is, we want to be thoughtful about the impact on every single stakeholder group. And so, we want to ensure that we have opportunities to create spaces to hear from students, to hear from parents, to hear from our teachers, our staff, and our school leaders, who will be responsible for the day-to-day support around sort of the push. You know, excited to share that one such group that is incredibly important, that's our student body. We have formed a superintendent's advisory council. And the superintendent's advisory council is a body of students with two representatives from each of our comprehensive high schools and one from our virtual academy, who actually will meet with the superintendent, the superintendent's cabinet, and eventually the board at least once a month to share, elevate, and bring forward ideas, struggles, perspectives, and challenges that students are faced with, and offer their suggestions. Incidentally, we had our meeting today, just about an hour before tonight's meeting. And again, as you can imagine, students sat on both sides of the aisle, was a very spirited discussion. But for the most part, I think there's understanding from our students, right, that this, in many instances, is a distraction. And so, my position, board member Marterano, is we will wait until the evaluation period expires in January, and certainly give some thought to whether or not the right time for us to move towards a district-wide ban, either fully or in a gradually released format, is on January 22nd, which is the beginning of second semester? Or do we want to do this in a more thoughtful way in the fall of school year '25, '26?
If I could ask a follow-up to that, talking about infrastructure, because I think one of the things that Hoover has done really well is use their radio team, which I think is a combination of building leadership, campus monitors, restorative justice coordinators. They're all part of the infrastructure that supports the teachers. And so, my understanding is every school district already has that, every school already has that infrastructure. So can you just help understand what's the additional staffing that might be necessary for these schools to implement such a policy starting next semester?
Yeah. Madam Chair, I certainly don't have a sense of what additional staff in schools will need. We will have to take a differentiated approach. We have to certainly consider things such as school enrollment, square footage, in order for us to have the appropriate building coverage. But as we stand, I believe that most of our schools probably have most of the staff and adults that they need in their buildings.
Thank you.
It's just about reallocating those resources as necessary so that we are not, again, pulling teachers into enforcement, and they have to focus on keeping the main thing the main thing, and that is our instructional practices.
Thanks. Ms. Alonso?
I think similar to what board member Gumples mentioned, one of the concerns that I've heard families have is safety and the inability of students to use their phone. And so, it's good to hear that consideration is being given to allowing spaces for families and students to come and kind of provide perhaps feedback about this new policy. So no questions, just more of a statement.
If I could just ask a follow-up, because I think it's always good to try and refer to the way Hoover's implementing it. So, Dr. Roberts, can you address the safety issue as it relates to cellphones? So currently, I believe that students can have their phone in a bag, their headphones, their watches in a bag, in their proximity, just not on them. Is that currently how Hoover is implementing the policy?
That is accurate, Madam Chair, yep.
So there's access to the phone even if it's not on their body? Thanks.
As needed.
Dr. Roberts, because we're student outcomes-focused, I'm wondering, my question for you, just to talk about a little bit, would, when you think of putting this policy forward, does it get in the way or distract from the goals and guardrails that we've given you and that our community has given you? Or do you see this as a tool to forward those goals and guardrails?
Thank you, board member Dix. No, I certainly have no evidence that suggests or supports that a district-wide movement towards improved mental health outcomes or a cellphone sort of adjustment in its policy or guidelines will distract from our commitment to student outcomes focus and goal achievement. On the contrary, I certainly will hypothesize without any data right now, since we're still in the evaluation period, I would pretty much offer that we are likely to see steady movement towards improved academic outcomes in students. Because again, anytime there's an opportunity for students to increase their engagement around the pedagogy that is being shared with them, they are likely to have achievement or improvement in their outcomes. Yeah.
Dr. Mayberry Mays?
Yes, thank you. So going last, many of my comments have also been addressed already. I would certainly reemphasize the importance of safety. But the two areas that I do want to bring some attention to, I also have kind of polled some friends, families, neighborhood associations, and they seem fairly favorable of it as well, with the exception of concerns for safety. So I think going back to one of the comments made by our speaker earlier, just being mindful about parents being able to access their children and their students in times of both urgency and emergency, in case their phones are not accessible. The second piece for me is through this lens of, for those who violate this policy, it's no surprise that there are certain populations within the school district that sometimes disproportionately are impacted differently consequentially. So I certainly want to keep that in mind for consideration of what a fair and effective consequence looks like for violating this versus each school or each individual being able to enforce the violation of the consequence separately. So that would be my only recommendation for consideration.
Thanks, Dr. Mayberry Mays. Let me offer, just based on my own observations, as well as certainly thinking about some of the conversations I've had with adults who serve here in Des Moines Public Schools, we have to certainly take so much into consideration as we move towards a district-wide implementation of our mental health movement or cellphone guidance. The individualized nature, right, of how we are implementing and how we're supporting students, and you will probably hear me intentionally avoid words and terms that are either deficit-facing or that are aligned to our criminal justice system. So words like violate and enforce, I will intentionally refrain from using those words because I value the lived experiences of our young people, of our students. And you all know I'm preaching to the choir, they deal with and are faced with so much every single day that does not necessarily support who they are, because we all tend to see them as just teenagers. But I truly believe that with our movement towards a district-wide sort of improved mental health push or cellphone change and guidance and policy, we are going to be able to invest our young people, right, in terms of how they become more engaged in this. I have spent an inordinate amount of time since the school year started in many of our high schools. And I can probably count on one hand the number of time when I've visited classrooms, I've seen cellphones out. So something is happening outside of just Hoover, and the message is reaching our students. Are there going to be instances where we have some students who might be a little recalcitrant? Yes. You know, the average cellphone right now is about $1,200. When a student has a possession that is $1,200, it means a lot to them. And so, an adult is not just going to be able to just confiscate or take or enforce a policy when a student values that. I'll give you two individualized cases. There are students who are the oldest in their family, they have two or three other siblings, and they are the go-to between their home and parents and what happens with their siblings. And so, telling them that you just can't touch your cellphone, and in the given time when you need it, creates an issue. In today's superintendent's advisory council, we had one student who shared that she has anxiety. And she also mentioned, and this is the risk of conflating two major issues facing public schools today, she mentioned that there has been an increase in school shootings around the country, and she has anxiety. And for that reason, she does not want to give up her cellphone. But she also shared that she's a high-performance student who does not necessarily use her cellphone in the classroom. And so, I think for me, I am encouraged by the Des Moines community investment in, from our speakers coming up here tonight and sharing data and their passion around why it's important for us to move towards a district-wide mental health movement or cellphone sort of policy, because we have to. We have to. And that's exactly where we're going to go. I think where there is a little bit of healthy tension is the timeline. Are we going to do this at the beginning of second semester, or will we do this in the beginning of next school year? And that remains to be seen. I certainly remain open to having additional conversations with our community members, to hearing from you, to meeting with you individually, but also recognizing that we are passionate about this and recognize that it's mission-critical if we're going to move the needle on student engagement, reduction in screen time, and improved mental health outcomes for them. So we are aligned, we just need to figure out the timeline.
So I think my quick clarifying question or question, so part of the reason we're actually here is because over time, there hasn't actually been any digital literacy, right? And so, young people are acquiring phones, and whether it's at home or at school, they're not actually getting educated on appropriate use, potentially in educational settings, professional settings, things like that. And I'm wondering what, if anything, is being thought about with regards to whether it's fifth grade or sixth grade, more conversations about responsible use. So potentially, you know, years from now, there will be an opportunity for students to demonstrate responsible use, whereas right now, they're addicted, right, and haven't been trained in that way. And so, whether it's this semester or for next year, I'm just wondering if that's being thought of at all.
Yeah, certainly. I really appreciate that offering. I think it probably would behoove us to look at schools around the country who are far ahead of where we are in terms of offering the digital literacy for students in earlier grades. We have not had those conversations, Madam Chair, but I know that my team, they are taking copious notes. You know, we continue to want to learn from places where they are exemplary practices. And so, that's something that you've just put on our radar.
Okay. Thank you for considering it. Clarifying questions seem to be asked. So I think now we'll just go to, I think, what Dr. Roberts referred to as the healthy tension. So would love to hear some feedback from the board. There is a clear petition with language. We don't have to consider that language the way it's written, but there is a request for action at this point. And so, I want to just listen to the board, get a sense of where people are, and if people are so inclined, we can seek a motion.
Perhaps I have another clarifying question. Dr. Roberts, can you help us better understand, the healthy tension is either beginning of second semester or the beginning of the next school year? Is there... Can you help me understand, the data collection you said is done in January regarding Hoover's pilot? Help me understand what needs to be done between now and your recommended timeline to have all of the resources, tools, information that you need?
Yeah, thank you, board member Marterano. I would say that there are three things that we certainly want to consider. The first is, the evaluation period sort of will be concluded in January. We are going to look at, analyze, and then share whatever that data is. The second is competing priorities, and this certainly is one of our top priorities. And so, we want to make sure that if we embark upon sort of the implementation of the mental health movement, change in mental health movement or cellphone guidance, that again, this does not compromise any of the priorities that we currently have in place, which probably includes our commitment in instructional program. And the third consideration, and is one that is certainly important to us, is the level of readiness, particularly from an implementation and tactical standpoint of teachers, leaders, and staff in every single building. We want to be thoughtful about the fact that we started this school year with a list of priorities that the adults in buildings are currently working on to improve and get better at. We don't want to compromise any of those because we have what some may consider to be a premature implementation of a new guideline.
So earlier, when Patrick asked you about would this impact us meeting our goals or honoring our guardrails, you said with confidence that you did not feel that this would impact that. But now I'm hearing that those are, in fact, potentially competing priorities. Is that an accurate statement?
Almost. Let me clarify for me.
Thank you.
No, so I do not believe that when implemented with fidelity, that this will get in the way of student outcomes focus. But I do believe that if we do not implement this in a thoughtful way, grounded in solid evaluation data, in the readiness of the adults to make sure that this happens and is done with fidelity, then it can certainly compromise many of our auto-priorities. I hope that's helpful.
It is, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask another clarifying question? I believe all of our, or all of our middle schools have cellphone restrictions currently? Or is it just some of our middle schools?
All of our middle schools, I believe, have some sort of cellphone guideline and policy.
And so, as well as Hoover? So really, what we're discussing is adding the additional four comprehensive high schools to the list and having more unified enforcement across the, or unified support for the policy across the district? Is that really what we're talking about?
Yes.
I just want to make sure the community knows that, because I thought the majority of our students either currently don't have cellphones in hand all day long, correct?
That is correct. No, but each of our five comprehensive high schools have some semblance of a cellphone guideline or policy. They are probably sort of supporting those in a manner that may have some variance from school to school. Hoover is the one that is much more targeted, the one that we are looking at in terms of the evaluation period. But each of the five comprehensive high schools have some form of a cellphone... But each of the five comprehensive high schools have some form of a cellphone policy in terms of how they're supporting students.
Thanks. And I just want to also make sure for the safety, for our community knows, if the majority of our students, you know, we know how we have been executing and taking care of them safely all year without them having cellphones necessarily in their hands for our middle school, and certainly most of our elementary school students, I would assume, do not have a cellphone, so.
Correct.
Just wanted to provide some assurance.
Thank you, Board Member Knox. Yes, we are going to continue to prioritize safety, security, and well-being, not only of the students who knock on our doors, but on 100% of the adults who show up to support them every single day.
Dr. Roberts, I'm having a hard time squaring up the information that we're hearing from our teachers, our parents, and our own kids about cellphones where we have policies and they are not being used with fidelity. And when I ask my own kids, and I asked them a couple of weeks in a row, "Just text me when you walk into a classroom or when you're done with a class." How many kids used their cellphone during class or just picked it up? 90%, easily, across the board. And I just, I know we have these policies in place, but I'm really having a hard time because what we're hearing is not matching up with what is the policy. And so I think for me, that's where I struggle with why not a more uniform, more clear policy that would be easier to implement.
Yeah, thank you, Board Member Dix. And this is really timely because what you have just shared will be an inevitable reality, right? And so it doesn't matter when we implement this district-wide policy, there are students who are going to push back or buck against the system. But I have the utmost confidence that we will be able to reach the majority of our students, right? One of the most important guidance or guidelines that we have given to teachers and staff and leaders in the pre-K-12 education space, way before we've thought about cellphone policies and guidelines, ever since we were looking at, and I'm dating myself, Walkmans and Dismans and headphones, is don't touch a student's property. Because we've seen the TikTok videos, when you touch a student's property or belonging and there's no relationship, the outcome is ugly. And so I think the evidence that you're sharing about your son's experience in autism is valid. We are in the infancy of the implementation timeline, and so we're likely to see that resistance. But I have the utmost confidence that, again, once we are thoughtfully looking at implementing this, we're going to get to desired outcome around, again, district-wide reduction in students' cellphone time and students' screen time, and hopefully significant levels of engagement in the instruction period. So I take what you're sharing, acknowledge it, you're probably accurate. Not all of our students are ready to invest in this, but we will get there. We will.
Dr. Mayberry Mays.
Yes, I would just ask, Dr. Roberts, in your expert opinion, would you suggest that we do this at the beginning of the second semester, at the beginning of the school year? Recognizing there is no perfect answer, but we're not the ones in the schools. We hear what the community wants, but as mentioned, there are several stakeholders in this. I would hate to implement something without fidelity that leads to a bigger issue going forward, but if the urgency is now and it needs to happen now, I certainly would be supportive of that as well. But just wanted to get your insight as to where you believe the timing should take place.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Mayberry Mays. And I, again, I am sitting in this interesting sort of binary place of a sense of urgency because I know once done, the outcomes are going to be remarkable around student engagement, but also recognizing that those who have to be a part of this work every single day, and I mentioned our staff, our teachers, our school leaders, I want to make sure that there's consideration for readiness, right? Because I think I heard Board Member Madarano share earlier, it's likely that something may have to give, right? When we, if we implement it within a much shorter time period versus a longer runway, if it pleases the board, I would humbly ask, not for a commitment on this evening, but I don't, because I don't want to make a decision that is devoid of solid and credible data. And the solid and credible data that I'm looking forward to is what happens at the end of the evaluation period, and that's in January.
Ms. Alonso.
I think that was my question. You know, according to our first speaker, she mentioned there, we're kind of late, you know, we're kind of behind on implementing a policy like this. And so do you get the sense across the district that there is that urgency to get started as soon as possible, Dr. Roberts?
Thank you, Board Member Alonso, yes. Certainly, there is a healthy appetite from the adults in our buildings that we would benefit from doing something, right, to make sure that we have a significant reduction in students' screen time and something that will allow us to have much more engagement. So yeah, there's a healthy appetite from the adults in the district to do something.
So just to follow up, would we be ready as a district to tackle this in January?
I can say with confidence that we will be ready as a district to tackle this at the beginning of the next school year, but it's also possible for us to have some readiness in second semester. But I will not, at this point, because we do not have enough data, make a commitment for a second semester implementation.
Okay, I'm going to ask a follow-up on that, then. It is the role of this board to make recommendations on policy, and sometimes that means competing priorities. Given that this falls under our goals and guardrails, and that it is a tactic that we have already seen success in, and more movement, frankly, at Hoover than we are seeing sometimes in our monitoring reports for our goals and guardrails, it gives me more confidence that we might see a broader outcome shift with a policy sooner. And I'm having trouble with why would we wait one day to do this? And instead of... And it isn't going to be perfect, and I don't think this board would ask you to be perfect. But I don't, I just am, I have looked all over the place, and I cannot find an instance where there is a story or some focus on a district that has put this into place and the outcome hasn't been good. Stories of bumps along the road, a tough month, for sure. But ultimately, the outcomes get moving in the right direction faster. And if that's what this board is supposed to be about, we're supposed to be outcomes-focused. We learn real early on, the first thing you learn when you're trained is the only way that student outcomes change is if adult behaviors change. And this is not a student problem, this is an adult problem. And I think we are in a position now where we have the tool in front of us to help. What are we going to do about it? And I don't want the perfect to be the enemy of the good here. And I feel like that's, I know it may put you in a tougher position, but I just feel like there is, there needs to be some urgency from my perspective around this topic.
Dr. Roberts.
Dr. Roberts, what would be the disadvantages to starting, to implementing this in January?
Well, one, we certainly do not have the conclusive data from our evaluation period. Secondly, we are thinking about the fact that there is an expectation that our school leaders, our teachers and staff have a number of priorities right now that they're focused on. And certainly, I, as the superintendent of this district, have to be thoughtful about how burdensome my decisions will be on faculty and staff. I certainly respect and commend the board for their commitment to governance that will get us to the right outcomes, but I sit in a place where every single day, I have to be thoughtful and intentional about how I'm leading and inspiring the adults in this district. And to make a decision that will devalue who they are and how they're showing up, to make a decision that can erode morale, I'm going to come back at this board meeting, sit in this dais, I will not be forgiven for it. And so I want to respectfully ask the board that you respect the expertise that I'm bringing in to the space when I say that we have to make and anchor our decisions in 100% credible and reliable data and be thoughtful about how we're doing that.
I would like to suggest that we potentially think about a recommendation for the superintendent on this topic. I think I've been a little quiet during this discussion because I think everybody knows how passionate and strong I feel about this. I think we should have been leaders. I think we should have started last year in addressing this, and I do think this is an adult readiness issue. I do not think this is anything more than that. If the district needs to change its priorities, to make sure that this is something that can get accomplished, I would like to hear a solutions-focused set of recommendations as opposed to a feeling of resistance, Dr. Roberts. I think, I think we've waited long enough, and I would like us to consider a universal policy. And so I'm not sure if anybody has a motion that they'd like to make or a set of recommendations around next steps.
A point of clarification, I feel like as a board right now, we're looking at this in a very binary way, where it's either the fall, and maybe that was me prefacing it that way, either the start of the school year or in January. There's a lot of other options. I'm not making a formal motion, but for consideration, could the full policy be implemented at the beginning of the school year with it being phased in, starting in January? There are components of this policy, I imagine, that could start as early as January that maybe the entire thing isn't. It sounds like there's already policy in place that's just not being enforced or implemented. So I would offer that, that we also consider that this is not just a binary decision.
Madam Chair, Dr. Roberts, I believe, was going to say something, just, I just want to make sure that you get a chance to share what you were going to share.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Alonso. There's no, certainly, it's in response to a suggestion of certainly seeking clarification around the assertion that there is resistance on my part. Madam Chair, I thought I made it very clear that as a district, we recognize the need for a district-wide cellphone guidance. I also asserted that as the person leading this district, I am being really thoughtful about the impact on our daily outcomes around operational excellence, how we're going to achieve the goals that we've set, and how we navigate our priorities. And so there's no resistance. I think the healthy tension that I referenced earlier is there seems to be sort of a difference in the desire around timeline. And I'm happy to have, again, additional conversations with the board about the timeline.
Rosie, may I have just a point of order? I believe that there's already a motion on the floor. Can you...
So we would need an amendment. We would need an amendment to the main motion if we want to move forward on a recommendation.
Will you remind me of the current motion that's on the table?
The current motion on the table was actually to consider the public petition on a universal cellphone policy. So it needs to be, we need an amendment to...
So the motion on the table is to implement a policy as it's exactly written based on the petition?
No, it was to consider the public petition on a universal cellphone policy. So...
Considering is what?
Considering...
Yeah, just for discussion.
Yeah. And that was the legal recommendation for how we would open the conversation. So I think the next step is if somebody wanted to make an amendment, and, because we have to amend the current recommendation, but it would have to be specific with regards to a recommendation that would be given to the superintendent that would direct a next step.
Yeah, I would like to, and forgive me, help me if I'm not calling the question accurately or amending accurately, but make an amended motion to table this conversation until our next board meeting.
So we will need to vote on this amendment, and then we will discuss it. So I will call...
A second first.
Mm-hmm. So I need a second first, need a second.
On the amendment.
On the amendment. And the amendment is requested table until the next meeting, which is November 26?
Yes.
All those in favor?
We don't have a...
Thank you. Who's going to second that?
We have a second.
Thank you. Okay.
You want to discuss now, or you want to...
We'll have a discussion now. We have to open it up for discussion.
I, the reason I make this motion to table is I think Dr. Mayberry Mays brings up a very interesting point. I think that we, as a board, have implored our superintendent with our goals, and that is the, that is the drive that we've given him for the year. And for us to give him a new priority mid-year, I think, could be detrimental. So I appreciate Dr. Mayberry Mays bringing our attention to the fact that it doesn't have to be either January or August, it could be somewhere in between, and hearing possible other options that could get us to a place where we are on the same page, we know something needs to be implemented, so where we can implement something with fidelity and have full buy-in of our community, parents, students, staff, and really not give up our students' learning and outcomes as a result of this.
So I made an error because motions to table are not debatable. So actually, we shouldn't have had discussion, we should just do an up-down vote. So I think I just want to call out the motion...
Sorry about that.
That's okay. I mean, I called for discussion. So to be clear, the amendment is a motion to table until the next board meeting.
Correct.
I'll call all those in favor.
Point of order.
Yep.
The motion is to postpone the discussion around a district-wide policy.
So we'll come back, right? So this will either up-down, right? So it'll pass or not, but then we'll still come back and... Thank you. Any parliamentarians are welcome to help me. So...
I've made a motion to table the conversation and decision until next meeting, so...
Correct. So if the motion fails, then...
Then we would have to go back to the table for...
We'll come back together.
Recommendation or another motion.
Thank you.
So I'm going to call for a vote, and I guess we'll just vote using the voting machine?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so all those in favor of the amendment to table, please press yes. Or no. Okay, so the amendment to the motion to table has failed, so now we'll come back again to the group for discussion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make an amendment to my original motion. I was the one who made the motion for discussion originally, I believe, right? I'd like to make an amendment to that motion. I'd like to make a motion directing the administration to present the board with draft language for a district-wide policy prohibiting the use of personal electronic devices in all Des Moines schools. I'd further move that a draft should be presented at the next possible regular board meeting for discussion, public hearing, public input, and a final vote following any established laws or school board procedures.
So that is a long motion, and I'm going to ask that maybe you state it again. No, just say the same words again, and also with a clarification that I don't know if a public input or listening session is necessary, just so, as you're thinking about that.
Okay, so the motion is I'd like to make a motion directing the administration to present the board with draft language for a district-wide policy prohibiting the use of personal electronic devices in all Des Moines schools. I'd further move that a draft be presented at the next possible board meeting, public board meeting, for discussion, public hearing, and a final vote following any established laws or school board procedures. And just as a, just so you can understand my thinking, I believe that that motion would give Dr. Roberts the flexibility he is asking for while leaning into the urgency that we are asking for, because we're asking for a draft as soon as possible. But that does not mean we cannot get public input for that if that is the recommendation of the staff moving forward. So can we go to the table with some urgency? How can we get this done as soon as possible and get the public input we're looking for so that we have the stakeholders at the table? I'd like to lean into the urgency. I'd like to lean into the urgency. Second, Mayberry Mays.
Just a point of question, I guess clarification. We're just asking for a draft of a plan as soon as possible.
A policy.
Got it.
I'd like to see a universal policy drafted by the experts as soon as we possibly can.
But you're also asking for a discussion at our next meeting.
I think once the draft policy would go into place, we could take a recommendation from our staff about how we proceed with that, implementing that. We decide when we would vote on a policy, so we could move forward with this and do two things at once, both get public input and be working on a draft policy that we can all live with as soon as possible. My concern is if we wait until the end of the first semester or January, then we start working on the policy, then we start working on public input. We're just backing up. And so my ask would be to do two things at once, and let's move forward as quickly as we can.
Okay, so part of my job is to make sure that the motion is clear, and I will ask my board colleagues to assist. So if you want to repeat it again one more time, we've got to make sure we have it.
Maria said in Spanish.
Increase the rigor.
I'd like to make a motion directing the administration to present the board with draft language for a district-wide policy prohibiting the use of personal electronic devices in all Des Moines schools. I'd further move that a draft should be presented at the earliest possible regular board meeting for discussion, public hearing, and a final vote following any established laws or school board procedures. I just want to make sure we're following anything we have to do.
I think the hesitation might be because you're making two motions, perhaps?
Okay.
You're moving for two, so maybe clarifying into just one motion, and then at the second one, you might be able to...
And a friendly amendment might include stating the date of the board meeting that you're asking the superintendent to come back.
Or can he... Or can he make two separate motions?
We're really testing Jackie out here.
My recommendation would say no.
I would say no.
Can I withdraw my motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to direct the administration to present the board with draft language for a district-wide policy prohibiting the use of electronic devices at all Des Moines schools.
Bye.
By the next regular board meeting.
November 26.
November 22nd?
Six.
Six, November 26.
So we have a motion on the table.
An amendment.
An amendment to the motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second, Mayberry Mays.
All those in favor? Any discussion? Then we will, any discussion?
Can I make a friendly amendment to utilize the language that Dr. Roberts set forth, and rather than it being a district-wide cellphone, I'm sorry, I didn't...
Prohibition.
Prohibition, that it would be a district-wide mental health movement policy?
Can we call it guidelines? Would that be a fair or friendly? Because I think you've been calling it guidelines, because that's in line with the policy language.
I would support that as well.
I think, yeah, the language that I had written down was mental health movement.
But that's a, that's a marketing name. What we're actually asking for is guidelines, codified guidelines. So would you accept my friendly amendment to your friendly suggestion?
Yes.
Okay, is everybody clear on the motion?
I think the friendly amendment needs to be accepted. I don't know whether it does.
I would, I would be open to the friendly amendment, taking out the word prohibition. I'm, I just...
Should we have a discussion about that?
We already have a policy on the use of personal electronic devices, and I'm really, like, I'm struggling with the word we need to put in there.
When, when we actually get the policy back, then we'll look at it, and we can have that conversation.
Okay.
But the starting point has got to be that we're asking Dr. Roberts to bring the policy to us by a certain date.
Okay, I'd be open to taking the word prohibiting out. Just a point of clarity for the original motion. I'm so sorry to confuse this. I want to make sure that I'm understanding from Patrick, is there an expectation for recommendation in this drafted language for implementation date? Or if not, we may end up right back in the same spot we're at right now?
We have two choices. I think one choice is to take it one step at a time and to have the universal policy come back to us on the 26th to discuss the policy and then discuss implementation timeline. That's, that is a way we could address this in a stepped manner. I'm looking for some general...
Yes.
Head nods. So if people are comfortable with that approach, Dr. Mayberry Mays, that's what I would recommend we do. Okay? So you have the honor of reading the motion with all of the friendly amendments.
I'm going to try.
We'll help you.
I'd like to make the motion directing the administration to present the board with draft language for a district-wide personal device use policy in all of Des Moines public schools. Let's leave it at that. At by the, that recommendation to come by the next regular board meeting on November the 26th.
So we have a motion. We'll need a second?
Second, Mayberry Mays.
Second by Dr. Mayberry Mays. All those, any discussion? I think we've, okay.
Sounds like we're going to have more discussion.
All those in favor? Okay, so the vote has passed six to one, and we will move to our next item. Information only. Next, we have one information-only item, which is the FY26 school calendar. This item will be at the next, will be on the, will be at the next regular meeting for a public hearing and a vote. So next board meeting, if there is public, if there's feedback, we'll receive that, and then we will vote on the school calendar as recommended by the superintendent. Next on the agenda, we have items of privilege. I would like to ask if our board members would like to share anything. Well, I'll start. So, look, we have to have hard conversations, and we are passionate people, and we care deeply, and we have deep feelings, and I just want to applaud everybody, Dr. Roberts, you as well, because I think we aim to be eight, and every once in a while, that gets a little tense. And so I just want to thank everybody for handling this with, with grace and passion and questioning, because I think all these things are really important to us as a team as we continue to want to be a team of eight. So thank you very much. Other items of privilege?
Madam Chair, I'll go. I just wanted to say thank you to the Roosevelt Foundation for a really successful event last Saturday night. They had a goal in place last Saturday of raising $80,000 for the Roosevelt Foundation, and the community ended up raising $137,000 for, for the Roosevelt Foundation. And that's going to mean more resources for our theater department and our orchestra, and uniforms for our teams, and it was just, in so many ways, this can be really frustrating work, as you've seen tonight. And, and they're just, there are a lot of things that pop up in your way as barriers. But when you sit in a room full of a few hundred people who are willing to give of their resources to make sure kids have a place where they belong and can do great things, it really charges the batteries again. And so I would just say thank you to the Roosevelt community for their support.
I'll just give an update from our foundation. I'm going to try to do a better job of letting the community know about the really good money that's coming into the DMPS Foundation and how it's being utilized throughout our schools. We are getting some photos in. I don't know if everyone saw, but when the, when Maverick purchased Come and Go, they chose a charity to make a contribution to, and they chose, chosen the DMPS Foundation. And this year, you will start to see the benefits of their gift, I believe it's $50,000, maybe $100,000, I should know, but a very generous gift that's showing up in our food pantries throughout our schools. And after a lot of conversation with our staff and students, really trying to make sure that our pantries are stocked with culturally responsive foods, and so that costs extra money when you need to source different foods and hygiene products are in high demand as well. And so we're just starting to get some photos in and seeing that impact show up in our schools and make a difference for our families that we serve. So I have a lovely list, and just want to, just want to give a shout out to philanthropy happening in our buildings.
I would like to invite everyone to attend the Community Legislative Action Team meeting on Saturday morning at 9:00 a.m. Capital View has graciously offered their, their building to host us. We will have invited legislators to join us for a fascinating and informative conversation about our DMPS budget as well as school funding. So please join us to advocate for an increase in student fund, or excuse me, an increase in public dollars going to public schools, 9:00 a.m. Saturday at Capital View.
Other comments? I have a feel-good story, and I did have to use my phone because I needed to find it. And we are working hard as well to, you know, adhere to no cellphones up at the board table. So some of you may recall when Susan Vandahar came to speak to us. She was the former art teacher and had talked to us about the Robert Johnson artwork that had been painted over, and expressed a lot of concern. I think a lot of us were really sad about that. And talk about putting your money where your mouth is. She offered, under Kaylee's kind of guidance and encouragement and urging, to take the lead and start up a committee herself as a volunteer with other former art teachers and I think others, to go building to building and attempt to catalog all of the different artworks that are in our buildings so we better understand the history of the murals and the paintings and the things that we have. So I both want to say thank you to Kaylee and obviously Dr. Roberts for allowing and encouraging that spirit of empowering our, our citizens to do something wonderful. And I just think it's a really neat story because we have great art, and sometimes we lack capacity to be able to catalog all of it. And so what a great way for somebody in the community to volunteer to step up and help. So thank you, and we can't wait to see what's going on. And my guess is if you're interested in this, you are welcome to help Susan Vandahar if this, you know, if this gets you excited. She's looking for volunteers. So thank you again. All right, Dr. Roberts, your turn. You get a word, you get a word in edgewise now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Certainly, in keeping with the theme of expressions of gratitude, I too want to say thank you to the board. You know, we sit as, as a team of, that was my, I went before my cue music.
Yes.
It's because of the excitement. No, but certainly, Madam Chair, you referenced just our, just continued commitment to evolve and become stronger as a team of eight, and I truly value that. You know, it is clear to me from the inception, and you continue to demonstrate that as a board, that you are just relentlessly focused on what is best for children, what is best for students, so often here publicly, and sometimes in private, Madam Chair. You challenge my, my, you push my thinking and challenge my mental model, and, you know, I'll say that I value that. Certainly, I think our, our discussion around the cellphone guidelines and our mental health movement is one such occasion where it shows that we can navigate healthy tensions because ultimately, we want to get to the right place for all of our students. And so I thank you, and I value that. I, I receive, and my team, I know many of them sitting in the audience, also receives the challenge for us to have something to bring it back to you, and we definitely will. I don't want it to ever get lost in anyone that there is misalignment in terms of, at least, we want to make decisions that will get our students to the right place. We owe that to 30,800 students, and so I'm excited about that. You know, we recognize here as the state's largest, most culturally and linguistically, sort of, public school, is that we are continuing to move towards improving outcomes for students. And over the last year, one such endeavor we've embarked upon to get to this place is called Reimagining Education: Reinviserating Schools. And while we are in a place that I consider to be phase one and still in our infancy, we have a lot of work ahead of us, but I think it's important, Madam Chair and Board, that in my closing remarks tonight, I share a little bit by way of preview with our community that you will receive some additional updates and guidance around what are we intending to do and what is on the horizon with regards to reimagining education, reinviserating schools. And some of these undertakings you've heard of, you've been exposed to, have some visibility in, that we've already started on in what I'm probably calling a soft phase one. So this year, we actually looked at expanding preschool access and removing barriers to such access by looking at some more sophisticated ways, right, of getting transportation to accommodate preschools, preschoolers and their parents. We've expanded our Montessori program, and we've looked at the data over the last five to eight years and realized that our highest-performing elementary and middle school is Coles Montessori, the first public Montessori school in the state. But what we have now done is to expand the offerings and benefits of that program to a much larger cross-section of students. And so having listened to the community, realizing that it's important for us not to reinvent the wheel, but just to replicate solid practices, we've expanded our Montessori schools program into two additional sites and are still considering, with input from our community members, a much larger expansion in years to come. And we've also taken a really deep look at the three grade level bands, pre-K to 5, 6, 8, and 9-12. And there's a lot of compelling data that suggests to us that we have some work to do with our grade 6, 7, and 8. And to that extent, we have made a lot of critical moves, one of them including some shifts in our principal leadership at a middle school and certainly hiring a dynamic and strong middle school director, and we're already seeing some of the benefits there. But as a part of the shift, we are also thinking about the benefits based on research of extending our pre-K or K-5 model to retain our 6th graders in our elementary schools. We started a single pilot this year from the early indicators. There are some bumps and bruises, but also we know that there are tremendous benefits to that. And so what I'm likely to bring to the board, and I've previewed for you in our weekly communication, is we are considering expanding our pre-K or K-6 model to at least three or four more of our schools, our elementary schools. We will have a really thoughtful and in-depth sort of report to share with you before we move in that direction. And finally, as I think about our commitment to this endeavor around how do we reimagine education for all of our students, to give them sort of world-class exposure and reinviserate each of our 64 schools, we are continuing to have conversations about this multi-year plan with our school and building leaders, with teachers and staff. We are committed to not only coming to the board in January with a recommendation, but we will create an opportunity to have at least a dozen or more, as needed, community conversations where we can get input from the community around what we are bringing forward and recommending. As a part of this commitment, we want to make sure that our community members have even more visibility into our potential program. And so you may see, as you drive around town, some additional marquee and billboards where we are advertising our reimagining education, reinviserating schools. Additionally, as of last Friday, we have launched an additional website called the Reimagining Education website. Please click on our main page, and that will provide you with a lot of information about where we are and some of the work we intend to do. We are certainly not where we want to be, but we are making steady progress towards making sure that Des Moines Public Schools this year and for years to come truly becomes the destination of choice for students and parents who are in the Central Iowa community and more specifically in the city of Des Moines. Madam Chair and Board, I am incredibly grateful for the discussions... incredibly grateful for the discussions, conversations, and push this evening as we continue to make the best decisions that will ensure safety, security, and upward mobility academically for all of our students. Thank you for this evening.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Roberts. So to all in the audience, thank you for joining us this evening. We appreciate you being here. This meeting is adjourned at 6:59. The board is going to take a brief break, and then we'll move into an open work session to discuss the monitoring report for Goal One. And for those of you who are unfamiliar, Goal One is the percentage of fourth grade students scoring proficient or advanced on the ISAS ELA assessment will increase from 50.1% in spring 2023 to 65% in spring 2027. Then after that, we'll have a brief open work session on vision and mission, and then we will move into a closed session on personnel. So board members, five minutes or less? Okay.
Board members, we are reconvening. It is 7:06. Tick tock. Let's go. Over there, on the table. And look what Patrick's got. Okay, so I think is there anybody on the line at this point? Rosie may have run to the restroom. While we are getting organized, Ms. Marterano or Ms. Knox, do you want to frame this work session?
Sure. Absolutely. So I am so excited for us to have our first monitoring session here for Goal One. So I guess some background for our community. As a board, our largest responsibility is to listen to the community voices, set a vision, and monitor the district's progress towards achieving that vision, and then, of course, make investments that support the vision. So to monitor the progress, the board will spend time during our board meetings reviewing data specific to goals or guardrails. And just to bring everyone back, we spent last year really listening to our community. Ms. Alonso led some incredible work around being intentional and going out to make sure we hear from as many voices as we could as we embarked on setting new three-year goals and guardrails with our new superintendent, Dr. Roberts. And so last year was a really exciting year of listening, setting goals, setting guardrails for our district, and then now we get to monitor them and see all of our amazing progress. So the progress monitoring is really an opportunity for the board to ask questions of the superintendent to help understand whether there's alignment between our vision and what we heard from our community and our goals and our reality. So really, how are our students doing currently in performance and growth? So we're going to ask a number of questions to see if the reality matches the vision, if there's growth towards the vision, and if there's a strategy and plan sufficient to cause growth towards the vision. So you'll hear us ask questions and maybe analyze specific about populations to help understand the data. And then this will help us inform our decisions as a governing body as we really review the budget down the road and other district initiatives. So I just want to emphasize that as a board, our role is to set the direction and vision. And it's the superintendent's role to identify and implement the strategies that will result in progress towards the goals. So we are going to start off each monitoring report with a specific goal or guardrail. And the monitoring report will have data that shows how we're doing compared to the targets or goals we have set for ourselves. So you're going to hear us ask questions to understand what's working and where there's gaps. And some some questions might be like, who's struggling? What are the gaps between different student groups? Do we know what's currently happening? Different questions like that. So again, really, our goal with monitoring is to understand the equity and learning environment and the opportunity for our students and so that we can make informed decisions moving forward around budgeting, staffing, and other key policies. So today, we are going to be monitoring our interim goals towards Goal One. As Jackie or Jackie had queued up, the percentage of fourth grade students scoring proficient or advanced on the ISAS ELA assessment will increase from 50.1% in spring 2023 to 65% in spring 2027. So as the facilitator, I'm going to ask the board if you could just clarify to make sure that we have a clear understanding of the superintendent's evaluation of our progress as as district specific to the goal.
Yes.
Do we, I will capture key action steps. Rosie, maybe you'll help me a little bit to make sure that the superintendent will implement progress towards the goal. We're going to capture, I'm going to help to capture information on specific actions coming in the future that will maybe inform our budgets and policies and drive progress towards the goal. And I will help to identify follow-ups from this session. So this current, yes?
Just before you start, I just want to make sure we have. You do. Okay, yeah, perfect.
Oh, thank you.
Yep. And just very quickly, if we could just do a quick introduction of our two guests at the dais.
Sure. Would you like to introduce yourselves?
Sure. My name is Dr. Robert Lundin. I'm the Chief Academic Officer. And I'd like to introduce another dynamic member of the DMPS team that we were able to bring on board and is doing remarkable work. This is our Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning, Allison Salo.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And for the community, we do have our board coach on the line. And so you may be hearing some suggestions of better ways to frame questions. And I welcome any coaching as well, as this is my first time facilitating, so bear with me. So this current report is not on track for our community to be aware of. And so I'm going to ask that as we ask questions, please make sure we're referring to the page numbers so that those watching can follow along. So we are going to start with any questions. Let's begin. Who would like to go first?
Dr. Roberts, on page one, it shows that our second and third grade students improved just 0.1% since last fall, from fall to fall. Why do you believe there was little to no improvement in the students meeting this benchmark?
Thank you, Board Member Marterano. And so I think it's important for us to know that this, again, this assessment was our baseline assessment that was administered, I believe, in FAS. And I also want to preface sort of the response by sharing that we will have more information regarding current action steps during our winter assessment. So there are a couple of thoughts. One, the assessment is the first assessment that occurred immediately after summer break. And so the team and I have drawn some conclusions and are still talking through that this can be attributed to, one, the lack of summer school and summer enrichment programs, which resulted in the inevitability of summer slide. We did not, as a district, provide programming and opportunities so that students can have continued practice around academic enrichment during the past summer. We also want to be thoughtful but unconcerned of the fact that there has to be an increased focus from our teachers who are teaching the curriculum with fidelity. We have looked at, as we think about the EL curriculum, and certainly this is second and third grade, which means that the two sort of major aspects of the EL curriculum around sort of the block implementation, skill block versus all block, there are opportunities for us to improve our pedagogical strategies around the skill block.
So the
I was referring from fall to fall, so not looking.
I, my question was looking at from fall data to fall data. So I'm not taking into account any sort of summer slide.
Okay.
So from fall, so on page one, from fall of 2024, our second and third grade students were at 43.0% and fall 2025, we were at 43.1%. You know, so not even looking at, you know, spring to fall. I know best practice at this time of year would not to be to compare spring to fall data. So I am comparing just the fall 43% to the fall 43.1%. There was no improvement here essentially, or very, very little. So is is the statement around lack of summer programming or your response regarding lack of summer programming and an increased focus of teaching with fidelity, is that, does that hold true for that fall to fall data?
It does. And let me also offer additional context, right? Because yes, in the fall of 2024, we also did not have any real intentionality around those enrichment offerings. And we know for a fact that because of the timing of both of these assessments, and Board Member Marterano, we can go as far back as looking at a three-year trend, fall 2022, fall 2023, and we're likely to see some consistency within about two to three percentage points where students have not moved. So in addition to the summer slide, and the district as a district, we have to own that we did not, we missed an opportunity to provide sort of enrichment to students in preparing them to get to the next grade level. I believe that we can certainly attribute some of the lack of movement to that.
So summer enrichment?
Summer enrichment, summer enrichment, you know.
The reason for, or lack of summer enrichment?
Yes, because again, there is very little instructional exposure in the new school year that a student will have before they are actually taking this assessment. And so if I may, I think we have a little bit more confidence in what is likely to happen when we administer the winter assessment, when students would have been exposed to some of the practices we're putting in place. I also want to offer that as I think about the data from the fall of 2023 and even the fall of 2024, there are some really strong pedagogical practices that we are now, we've now implemented and are embarking upon. Case in point, you've heard and will continue to hear the team and I reference, to looking at the science of reading. We are now in, we're still in our infancy, but probably in our second year of really focusing on the science of reading across the board for teachers in pre-K all the way through fifth grade and even in some of our upper grades. And I believe that while this data doesn't reflect that we are, the actual is exceeding the target, it's the timing of the assessment.
Thank you.
Who has the next question?
I have many, if you want me to keep going.
Is it okay if I go over the questions that I had shared? Just a minute?
Absolutely.
On page four, under what's going well for Goal One, Dr. Roberts, you indicated the implementation of EL curriculum and science-based reading strategies supporting students entering third grade. Can you give us some insight into what those strategies are and why, why they're successful?
Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Alonso Diaz. And then just to provide some quick, so maybe additional context, the science of reading that you're going to hear a lot more about is really, it's a comprehensive body of research that combines a sort of a that combines a sort of a number of really credible input and offerings from the fields such as psychology, neuroscience, and education. And essentially, what it does is it explains how people learn, and in this case specifically, how students learn. And this is only the second year where we are training our teachers to utilize the science of reading, primarily with a focus in our lower grades. In 2024, August to November, we had some professional learning, professional development around the science of reading. The EL curriculum, 2nd grade, prior to 3rd grade, you know, what happens is, and I alluded earlier to skill block versus all block, the skill block is for the lower elementary grades, right? Grades, I'll say grades 1, 2, and 3. And this is where students are looking mostly at things like explicit phonics, looking at instruction-consolidated alphabetic types, essentially without getting deeply into the technical pedagogical terms. We are now in the second year of truly implementing the science of reading to build capacity in our teachers around improving reading outcomes of students using these strategies. Is that helpful?
Thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Your second year of the science of reading, but EL is based on the science, the EL curriculum is based in science of reading, and we are in Year Four of EL curriculum implementation, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Year four or five? May I offer if I may before you?
I was waiting.
You know, one of the observations that we have made with regards to the EL curriculum now, when it's 4th to 5th year of implementation is, and I also want to make sure that I acknowledge that it's certainly not an excuse, but part of the reality, we've seen a little bit of the implementation dip probably in Year Two or Three. What we're also owning right now, Board Member Mariano, others is the fact that here in my second year, we have gotten a lot of feedback from teachers around how the district's guidance to them and school leaders stifles or doesn't allow for a lot of creativity in terms of the art of teaching because of the rigid nature of the EL curriculum. And so we are having a lot of conversations right now that will likely result in, instead of waiting until the end of the school year, for us to make some pivots where we are allowing teachers a little bit more flexibility in guidance. We're not going to go as far back as what was our reality 3 or 4 years ago, which was a lot of autonomy in schools where there was no real consistency. But we ought to make sure that we are listening to teachers who are the experts and grant them a little bit more of their flexibility. One primary piece of data I want to share is simply this. When you look at, for example, some very specific lessons, and this is one observation that I've made as well as other members of the team, in a single lesson, a teacher may have, what I've seen in some instances, five or six standards that they have to cover. I want you to think about a teacher being given this task to cover five or six standards with students who have reading deficits and gaps. And then what eventually ends up happening is a teacher may miss opportunities, actually move a significant number of students along. The pivot that we are likely to make, and I'm certainly open to having the board push us again when we come back with the winter assessment results in this, is we have to start to look probably at maybe the power standards. And so instead of a teacher looking at maybe five or six standards that is built into one lesson and trying to cover all of those standards in that one class period, have them focus on those power standards. Essentially, to sum up, a lot of our teachers are struggling with this dichotomous relationship of pacing versus mastery. Because we expect them to, and they are intentionally at least also trying to achieve a pacing guide that based on my limited knowledge of the EL curriculum is almost unattainable for a teacher to have excellence. And so the Chief Academic Officer or Director of Teaching and Learning and other members of the Teaching and Learning team know that we have to make this pivot.
Thank you. I appreciate your vulnerability and honesty around that. That is something I have heard from our elementary teachers, that pacing versus mastery. So thank you for that.
Pleasure. Anything else?
I would just actually refer back to the instructional rounds that Ms. Campos did with our team, where we actually witnessed some of those similar trends. And the phrase that Ms. Campos heard me use a couple of times when we debriefed with the team was, we want people executing on the EL curriculum with fidelity but with forethought. They could be making smart instructional choices in the moment and not feeling like they're unable to pivot in the moment when they see the learning needs of their students directly in front of them. But this question of getting to mastery is fundamental, and it's a question that we're examining across pre-K through 12 of how teachers are not only gauging meaningful mastery of content, but then able to show that to somebody else and then use that to inform
Thank you. Who has the next question on current performance?
I have one more. On Page Four, under What's Not Going Well, 39% of Black and 61% of Latinx grade, grade 2nd and 3rd students were not meeting the fall benchmark on fast bridge CBM reading. What prevented the growth for these two populations?
Repeat after me, sorry, Board Member...
That's okay.
Page Four.
On Page Four, under What's Not Going Well, 39% of Black and 61% of Latinx grade 2nd and 3rd students were not meeting the benchmark on fast bridge CBM reading. What prevented the growth for those two populations?
Yeah, I'll have my team jump in and then I'll build in there.
Can you all hear me okay? Not used to the microphone. So that's a really great question. And I think initially, Dr. Roberts addressed the fact that the benchmark, as far as at this point in the year where they're at, we administer the fall assessment the 2nd to 3rd week of school. So we wouldn't have had a chance to provide any instruction. So some of what I'm going to share with you, actually, most of it truly is unknown at this point until we have a data set to compare it to with our winter testing, which will be very soon, which is exciting just to see, okay, did we make growth? How much? And if not, what more can we do? Here are some things I can tell you. As I dug further into the data, also to address the fact that we could hypothesize that perhaps they didn't get opportunities to experience and practice over the summer, right? Those skills that they may have left the school year with. And also, those particular student groups, 40 with 2nd and 3rd grade in particular, 48% or 1,224 of the students, excuse me, in 2nd and 3rd grade are Black and Latinx, and they're ELL as well, English Language Learners. And out of those students, the 48% of those students, they're either newcomer or first and second years into our ELL programming. And we would expect that it takes four to seven years approximately for them to possibly become proficient. And so that could be, we don't know, something that we need to consider is spending more time thinking about what language strategies we could be further investigating or embedding, making sure that we're supporting those students. And those strategies are good for all students. Our curriculum does have, EL curriculum, a lot of strategies built within. So as our teachers are unpacking during their PLCs, CLCs, weekly meetings, for them to be explicitly looking for those strategies and making sure that they're using them, but also collaborating with our ELL teachers and making sure that they're monitoring their progress more consistently. So those are just some wonders we have. Again, I think we'll know a lot more as we get our winter data, just to have a data set that compares and based on action steps that were set in the spring with our professional development opportunities. We also know, back to Dr. Roberts' point about the science of reading and this being new learning for our teachers, they need not only to be able to understand and the theory behind it, which is what they're learning about, put it in practice, and then get feedback about it as well. And so we're also growing our building leaders, getting them into the classroom. And hopefully, teachers are getting quality feedback. So if they're not seeing these language-rich strategies in the classroom, that they're getting feedback from their building leader and making those instructional decisions based on that. Those are just some of the, some of the things we've been wondering about. But I do think it's important to understand, especially for our newcomers, you know, they're coming in, speaking no English, this is their first time in an American school, some of them. And then we're asking them to take a grade-level standardized test in reading when they cannot speak our language and haven't yet learned to read. And so, and that would also be very similar to some of our students that are in the first through 3rd year of ELL programming as well. And so that is definitely a priority as I look at that data set.
Sure. Thank you.
Dr. Roberts and team, as I look at Page One, particularly the fall numbers, I'm struck by the consistency and by the growth. There is consistent growth, but there is consistently, back to the beginning, it's like Groundhog Day, looking at Page One. When you all look at that, a pattern would seem to be emerging. And what do you think about that as, how are you thinking about that as leaders? Because it would seem that there is something there that we are back to the exact same place every year.
Yeah. I think the one thing that stands out to me is while we have very little control, control, Board Member Dix, over the timing of the state assessment that really produces this data, as a district, we have missed the opportunity to offer some enrichment over the last several years. Let me say to the board right now, as we think about resource reallocation, having solid summer enrichment programs is inunnegotiable moving forward. So you'll not hear us come back to the board meetings in future monitoring after this coming summer and with this excuse. You know, we've looked at, for example, one of the most credible organizations around assessments in the country, the NWA MAP data. NWA MAP is an organization that supports about close to 5,000 school districts. And they have produced some really credible research that is being used across the country right now. And they have shared and highlighted that a student who misses a structured or targeted summer enrichment program probably will need an additional 4.5 months of instruction or close to four months of instruction in solid EL instruction in order for them to get caught up or become proficient. And so they've offered, almost as a panacea, right? Some key points around a summer enrichment program that will likely mitigate the kind of summer slide we've seen. Some of those includes, one, making sure that we have highly qualified staff that are teaching students in a summer school. I know in many instances over the years, we've had summer staff who we recruited to teach in summer school of sheer that, one, they were too exhausted, or, two, the competition was not adequate. Additionally, we want to be thoughtful about intention and have intentionality around culturally responsive pedagogy in summer school. Because when we look at the population of students, in this case, Goal One is about English Language Learners who are struggling, that we can no longer just focus on just solid teaching strategies that includes the science of reading, but it has to be culturally responsive. We have to be intentional about ensuring that the pedagogical delivery is engaging, it's meaningful, and it's affirming. So we have to, and I know I'm going to overindex on this, our summer enrichment programs will be a game changer for us.
I was just going to clarify that the goal is about all 4th graders, but some of our interims break down into population. But just for the community to know, it's about all 4th grade students.
Thank you.
Yes.
I just...
Sorry, I just, I have a, just a quick, and I don't know if this is the right time to do it in the monitoring, but is there, Board Member Knox, a way that we could, as a board? I agree with Dr. Roberts that I'd like to see more of a discussion during our budget time about these particular issues. And so just maybe a note that as we start up those budget discussions, that these specific conversations happen, not just general talk about kind of where we are budget. And maybe we can get into this a little bit more so that we, as a board, can understand where those resources are going to make sure that we're supporting exactly what Dr. Roberts is talking about.
I was just going to share that I did just submit a request to Dr. Roberts and Shashank to understand the past 3 to 4 years of summer school. Because prior to you getting here, there's been a lot of money dedicated to summer school, and the efficacy of the dollars is unclear. And, and so, and I think, I think there maybe was not the ample thoughtful planning that starts now for the summer. And so knowing that you're coming into that role, just maybe looking at the dollars that that have been available and some of the past feedback we've gotten on, on summer school efficacy.
Thank you, Madam Chiro. Yeah, that is accurate.
I, I'm a little bit confused, and I know we're not in the, the future-focused portion of our conversation yet, but nowhere in the actions or strategy moving forward does it talk anything about summer school. So I realize that that's been the response as to why we are where we're at. But as a, as a action or strategy, it's, there's nothing listed there regarding summer school. So I worry that, so is that, is that a stra, action or strategy that was missed in the report or?
I think from what I read, these are...
I read, I don't know. Am I on?
Right.
Yes, okay. I read the actions or strategy of what they have been doing, and then the what's next would be where I would expect to see summer school, perhaps.
And actually, I just want to point out, this is a good, is this our first time using the revised?
Yes.
And so I do see Josie back there, too. And so it's helpful, maybe, as you're going through these clarifications, if there's questions like that and things that aren't clear, let's call those out, too, because this is the first time using this type of monitoring report.
Yeah, thank you. The simple response, Board Member Mariano, is yes. That was one that was missed as we were finalized in the report. But again, discussions after the submission of the report amongst the teams brought us to the realization that we absolutely must have our summer school as a strategy, given what is clearly summer slide. Because of the time and again of the administration of the assessment, where students were not exposed to a significant amount of time and instruction, it's that summer slide as a part of it.
I'm, I'm struggling, and I'm going to go to a new question and a new data point on Page Three. Our 1st grade students decreased 2.5% since last fall. Again, not looking at spring to fall, but looking from fall to fall. What do you attribute this decrease to? And I, I'm struggling with the answer of summer slide. This is, we're fall to fall data, regardless of the timing of the assessment, regardless, I mean, whether or not it's grade level, or the summer staff resources, we're looking, I'm asking fall to fall.
Sure. Yeah, thank you. Certainly, the summer slide is just one of those data points. There are some things that I want to point out. One, we are going to acknowledge that we need to provide more opportunities for students to receive targeted and differentiated instruction in small groups. And we have to increase intervention for those students. As we think about 1st grade students, again, the skill block rotations are critical. And what we are seeing is while there is a significant number of our teachers, I believe, when we've looked at the data, about 65% or so... I believe when we've looked at the data, about 65% or so of our teachers were implementing the EL curriculum with fidelity. I take that back, 90% were implemented with fidelity, but only about 65% of students. And this may include our first grade students who are actually accessing the curriculum. So we're not going to attribute all of the sort of stagnation of data or even the slide in the data just to summer school. We have to think about core instruction, tier one instruction. It's not where it needs to be, and it's not necessarily just sort of pointed solely in the direction of teachers. It trickles all the way up to yours truly. What is happening with teachers? Are they receiving a coaching, support and feedback from principals? Are principals being held accountable with regards to how they are observing instruction and providing timely, bite-sized feedback? And then it comes all the way up to the chief academic office and yours truly. So core instruction and tier one instruction is not where it needs to be.
Thank you, and I'll, I'll save this question for our future focus. But preview, you're saying it's core and tier one, but then you're saying intervention, and those two don't align.
Well, Board Member Marano, we can have one without the other though, right? So you're absolutely right. It's a good call out.
Yeah, if it, if the, and I'm totally out of bounds, and our coaches are probably like sweating right now. But you can't, you can't intervene your way out of a tier one concern. If this is a tier one concern, a system-level concern, which is what you've just stated, it is core, then yes, we have to have intervention. However, that can't be the response.
I'm going to, I'm going to channel Dr. Mayberry Mays here. Can we put that into some more?
Ultimately, when we say that it's a, it's a core instructional concern or a tier one concern, that means all eight of us at the table are struggling with it. And it's a system-wide, we need to address the entire system of tier one. Every student needs this. So intervention is, little Kim needs assistance in this because she's struggling with it. Tier one, we all. So we, and I should let the educational experts talk, sorry. I'm going to shut my microphone off.
No, 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 we appreciate that push, right? And so again, you know, the reason I'm acknowledging that it's core or tier one instruction is because it's based on a number of out, sort of data points. One, the outcomes that we're seeing in students, not only just based on the data, but based on the observations we're making. The teaching and learning team spends an inordinate amount of time in classrooms observing instruction to understand what is happening. And that's where they're able to see and observe gaps. I believe from a pedagogical standpoint is we cannot afford to just focus primarily on core and tier one instruction and then come with on the back end to provide intervention. I think there needs to be a healthy balance, right? Almost a simultaneous adoption of both and all blah.
Member Knox?
Yes?
Can I ask a clarifying question, please?
Of course.
Okay, thank you. So the data that Member Marano referenced on page three, I just wanted to clarify the two data points that she's looking at, fall 2024, fall 2023. Are those about the same group of students? Or are those about two different groups of students?
Two different groups.
Thank you. So, so those are about two different groups of students who are in first grade when the assessment was administered. And the group of students who is in first grade now and was assessed back in September, fewer, a smaller fraction of them met the benchmark than the students who were in first grade back in fall of 2023 and who are currently, I would guess, in second grade. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So I just wanted to clarify that because some of the questions that I saw, some of the patterns that were mentioned, I think have an implicit assumption that it's the same cohort of students. And therefore, trying to make sense of evolution in their performance through time. And the reality is that.
Assumption at all. I recognize that this is not cohort data. I'm looking at, as a system, teaching our first graders, we are not being successful.
Okay, so those are students who are a week or two into the first grade, right?
Correct.
Okay. So if we're looking at what does this data mean? I think it can help to offer questions in our lower inference. So when students are starting first grade, when they're being assessed in September, this group of students has a lower fraction who are proficient or meeting benchmark than the prior cohort. And you all know much better than I do if there are, if those two groups of students are expressly comparable or not.
Just very quickly, you know, yeah, look, Board Member Marano, you are right on point. We are not meeting the mark with how we are delivering our instructional practices for our first grade students. And looking at this data, there is not that we are sitting on our laurels and not doing anything. What is happening right now are a number of interventions that we're putting in place. We are looking at the pivots and shifts that we have to make around, one, how we're delivering core instruction, also how we're supporting teachers, what kind of professional development that is targeted and differentiated we're providing to teachers as well. Because it's clear that what we've done in the last few years has not worked. And we have to do something that is radically different. And we're talking through what those some things are.
Thank you.
Just a follow-up, if we actually wanted to do an off-cycle monitoring to understand some of the potential recommendations that you're making, when would you be prepared to share those?
Certainly, the board can come up with some timeline recommendations, unless you want us to consider, want me to consider bringing some back to you.
Well, these are, these are measures that we only get in fall, winter and spring. So we can't, and we're already scheduled to do.
It's the assessment.
What, what I'm saying is, I think what I was just trying to understand is it sounds like you are recommending shifts, given the historical year-over-year issues.
Yep.
And so whether that's an off-cycle monitoring report or somehow, I think we'd like to understand the shifts that you're recommending.
In terms of strategies that we're going to use, I'm not sure if the board is going to benefit from that now, or do you want to wait until our winter assessment? And then we can come back and say, here's what we've tried, based on what we're discussing currently. And we should be able to see and measure growth between this current fast bridge assessment and the winter administration.
And that would be prior to the budget?
Yes, January, winter assessment.
Yeah, okay.
Tag dates, yeah.
So if there's budget implications?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions about the monitoring report in the current state?
I have one, and listen up, Coach, because this one will probably straddle two areas, and I would appreciate some coaching on it. But when I look at page one, two, and three, whatever the data is, that it is the starting data that intrigues me. And so I'm curious as to what the expectations are or when we have an expectation that our strategies around pre-K might kick in here and get us a raise in the fall number, because we are seeing increases in the, you know, through the year. The teaching is working, but the, in some of these. But that's what I'm, that's my curiosity, is when do you expect that to kick in?
Yeah, certainly, we'll punt to Dr. Lundin and our director of early childhood is also in audience. Patrick, we are encouraged by what we're seeing right now with our students in pre-K. But the question is, an excellent question around, when do we expect to see the return of that investment?
Yeah, so in this last year alone, the expansion of our pre-K program into more satellite sites should get us a greater number of students that are coming into kindergarten in a better place, ready to perform on assessments like this. We believe the continued growth of the pre-kindergarten program can only serve to strengthen performance in this, in this area.
Just to call out to my colleagues that we're, we need to ask questions about the information that is in the monitoring report, unless the staff bring. Bottom number?
I asked about the starting, that's my question is.
But pre-K is not in the report as a strategy to improve the bottom numbers? So instead of making suggestions, we're supposed to ask to understand what is the staff doing so that we can try to assess how we feel about their approach? Any other questions about what's in the report?
Are we talking about the current state?
Current state, current state. Are we ready to move into future? I guess I have one last question. When we ju, we just set these numbers, it feels like a few weeks ago, it was months ago. But as far as our targets over the next three years. And, you know, while there was some slide in the numbers that were projected, there was still overall growth year-over-year, like our fall-to-fall growth. What strategies did you have in place at the time when we set these metrics that we felt was gonna, that you felt were going to help you achieve these numbers? That these were achievable that clearly did not work?
The strategies that did not work from fall to fall?
Right, so like when we, when we set these numbers just a few months ago, you know, when you set these numbers a few months ago, you would have looked at the last three years of data and said, you know what? There might be a little, you know, we know fall 2024, we were only at 43%, but we really believe that fall 2025, we're going to come in at 51% of our two, three grades, two to three students meeting benchmark. And so I would assume that you had some strategies that gave you confidence in seeing that much growth year-over-year when we set these, when you set these metrics. And so what, what were those strategies that did not work that you're going to pivot away from or that need more support to really work? In, in, to help us hit our goal of a spring 2027, you know, student group at 65% on the bottom of page one, when we're talking about like interim goal one A, for example?
Yeah, thank you, Board Member Knox. The strategies that we've put in place over the last year need to be given time to mature, right? And so when you think about making significant pivots around either how you're delivering core one instruction, or even if you're using interventions, while we expect to see growth, either as we look at formative assessments, which is the assessments that happen on a much more frequent basis, or growth in summative assessments, I would posit that it will take us a little bit more than a year to see significant growth. So the ones that we've implemented thus far that did not yield the results we expected, we are not going to necessarily pivot away from them. We are going to refine them to become much more sophisticated and then even explore additional strategies. But I wouldn't want us to look at strategies, for example, the ones that we implement, look, embarked upon over the last year. We are not going to wholeheartedly just deviate away from all of them. We keep refining. Is that helpful?
Sure, I was just curious if you, kind of what, what you thought was going to yield that growth that did not have the outcome that you desired.
Yeah, so maybe two or three things. One, recognizing that we continue to see a significant shift in our student population around the changes in demographics. We realize that there is a need for us to invest all of our teachers in district in improving our cultural competencies, culturally responsive pedagogy. And so what we looked at is our GLEAM framework. We have spent significant time investing not only in GLEAM as a framework, but in what it looks like in practice. We are, we are now in year two of the GLEAM framework. So we have a lot of data that shows growth, if you may, around what that looks like. So case in point, I'll go to my notes and reference from our GLEAM inventories. I believe that we have seen.
94.81% of teachers implementing at grade-level instruction?
That is correct. However, in some instances, about 62% of students are observed really actively engaging in the content. We are in year one. I believe that if the team should provide us with data right now around what we're observing in year, in year two, sorry, in year two, we've made, made adjustments based on what we've seen from the previous year to this year. I wouldn't necessarily conclude that the strategies haven't worked yet. We're still refining those.
Any other questions about the current state? Otherwise, we can move into kind of our future-facing questions.
I think I have a question, Jenna. I'm trying to stay in line. So it's.
Watch out.
I know, I've been pondering. So it's evident, I also recognize the lack of the summer enrichment. My question is, in the current state, do we have community partners that are offering complementary summer enrichment programs or services to any of our students, particularly those that might be culturally responsive? Or is the responsibility mainly on the district and its staff?
Right, no, the responsibility is mainly the district and staff. But we, again, we are going to continue to make that call out to our community partners. You know, I know that, I'm aware of some that we have at our secondary school level. The Beyond the Bell Grant, for example, really have some community partners who are focused on providing some support. But we need to find opportunities to have additional supports, particularly in summer school, right, for community partners, or even during the year. The issue, Dr. Mayberry Mays, is qualified community partners who can actually deliver unquality pedagogical practices. Not just a community partner who will not give us the kind of return we need. But that's a good call out, and we want to come back to the board after our all-call to bring community partners in, whether it's reading programs or pedagogy, we need to invest in community partners.
And Dr. Mayberry Mays, I think it's, it's critical as we're looking at summer opportunities that there's a continuity of the narrative that students are receiving when it comes to the mechanics of reading instruction. And so if we find partners that are able to understand the methodology and science of reading and that EL is utilizing and carry that forward, then I think they would be ideal. But for sure, we want to make sure that we've got that smooth continuum so that the student who's going into that summer opportunity is feeling like it's a natural extension of the learning that's happened and that ends in June.
Thank you.
If history serves as a, I guess, looking back around the summer school programming, it appears post-COVID that we have not had the educational providers, the teachers, who were willing to nest into and partner with the community providers for a whole day experience because you needed to have a licensed educator. At least that's the way I understood it when it was presented a couple of years ago. What strategies will you consider should you not have the licensed teachers or those equipped to teach the science of reading?
That puts us in a really serious predicament. Because if we do not have, one of the things that NWA organization recommends in their report is in order for you to sort of mitigate that summer slide, you need to have highly qualified teachers. So just having a warm body in front of students in a camp-like setting, it's not going to get us the outcomes we need. So it's incumbent upon us to make a convincing argument to our teachers, which may require us to have the appropriate compensation for them to be the instructors in summer school. There is no substitute for a highly qualified teacher. And if we can't find them for summer school, quite frankly, we are in trouble. We may have to start thinking about maybe the leadership in the district to do some of that work. But it has to be.
I appreciate that, just because I think there's a, there's a lot of interest on the part of the community partners. And yet it seems like the thing that's happened post-COVID, understandably, given so many of the demands on teachers and the burdens, is that there's fewer teachers that are participating and helping during the summer.
Any other future performance questions?
Point of clarification, could I ask a question about the future based off of the discussion that we've had? Because I think Dr. Roberts made an interesting point, but I'm not going to reference any of the data on the report. Is that okay?
Yes, I think if the staff bring it up, or also if it's, was referenced as like a past strategy, that's fair game too.
So, Dr. Roberts, you talked a little bit about getting the teachers to understand that there is some flexibility there so that they are not as rigid in their practices. So understanding what their guardrails are, if you will, in, in the classroom. What are you doing or what will you do moving forward to get the building leadership to? That sounds like a cultural problem in the building, right? And so to what extent are we giving our teachers the assurance that they have that lane that they can move around in a little bit based off of their teaching expertise?
Thank you. You know, I'm encouraged, Board Member Dix, by. You know, I'm encouraged, Board Member Diggs, by just the willingness of our school leaders to do whatever it takes in order to move the needle for students. And so I, I don't anticipate a barrier, at least in most of our schools. Certainly, there are instances, based on the feedback that I've gotten from teachers though, where there are a few school leaders who are resistant to being flexible. And that resistance is not necessarily because they don't want the best outcomes to students. I think that resistance is in part due to the expectations that those of us at the district office have set for school leaders and teachers. And we have to be flexible. We have to be flexible. We've had ongoing conversations with our leadership in the teachers' union, who've expressed some of the same concerns that teachers have, which essentially tells me that what is getting in the way is how we are providing guidance from the district office. I, I let me be vulnerable as well and share in response to what you've just lifted as a concern, is we've even heard from, as you think of a future state, our talented personnel team, that they are potential teacher candidates who've said that there's a rumor mill that the more in public schools will not have any flexibility in how they're implementing curriculum, so they do not want to visit our tables, our recruitment tables, to come to the district. So we've heard that recently, and so we are intentionally addressing those.
Another question. So I'm looking at the, the very last page, I believe, yes, page seven, or no, six, to better understand definitions, because I do get a little confused by the definitions as well. And what I saw is that on the ISAS assessment, that it is taken in grades three through 11, would it be of value to also provide the scores of these same cohort of students on their score in third grade and in fourth grade, since we know they take it both times, and add that to the monitoring report? So we could see a, a population of students, if their scores are actually increasing versus looking at a completely different group of students each ti, or each year. I know, I, I was hoping it said first through 11th, but it's only third, so.
Cohort data?
Yes, would, would that be of value, or is that outside the governance framework of SOFG?
So Dr. Roberts chose these measures and these data points based on how well they align, or if they're predictive, to meeting ISAS. So right now, we're not even looking at ISAS data yet. We're looking at the measures, the FAST data, that is predictive of us meeting that ISAS score in the spring. So, based on, you know, the superintendent owns the interim measures. And so I would, that would be a question for the superintendent and team versus us as a board. And I would lean into our coaches to respond to that as well.
I, I think one thing that could help is maybe a quick review of how the interim goals and their targets were set, because a few of these questions seem to be getting at that. I know that was, as Member Knox said, just about six months ago, that they were adopted or approved or received, but putting it in context might help with that. I also agree with you, so please feel free.
What would be an appropriate format or time to do that?
I think, as you just mentioned, that's really up to the superintendent and his team. That could be additional context added around this monitoring report, or it could be incorporated as, you know, the standard continuous improvement process for future monitoring reports on these goals and also other goals that, that you all have adopted.
So what I'm hearing is there is flexibility that we have that will keep us within the, the confines of the monitoring, of the SOFG process, if we come back with some recommendations to essentially pivot as needed?
I, what I'm hearing and what I'm trying to identify is just that some of the questions, I think, relate to how were the interim goals selected? Maybe why are they predictive? These are discussions that I'm guessing you had this spring, which I was not present for, but if you, if further clarification of how the interim goals relate to the, the goal that the board adopted would be helpful. That could be incorporated into the monitoring report. That's certainly useful context that doesn't need to change each time, because it's really just presenting the context along with the goal and the interest. And another question I heard indicated that there is some questions about how the targets for the interim goals were set, given that there's the reality that implementing changes in a district at scale takes time, and that the progress that's, that the progress that's visible in the data so far is not at target.
So again, the, the, the setting of those goals, targets versus actual is a collaborative effort. Certainly, some of the, the heavy lift is placed on, on my shoulders and that of our director of data assessment, who can provide some context around sort of process.
And I'm going to apologize, because when the final targets were set, I was out on maternity leave. So I'm, I'm playing a little bit of telephone here, but my understanding is that those targets were set in conversation with the board of, in finding a balance between aggressiveness and what we identified as achievable in that time. And then subsequently, the interim goals were set up to be aligned, to set us up for meeting those goals, where we know there are correlative properties between outcomes on FAST to those ISAS outcomes. If it would be helpful, I could provide written documentation of what we have for those correlative properties. I don't have them on hand, though.
I think it's in board docs.
Okay. So I actually trust that there's the correlation between the interim goals and the, and the goal itself. That, that's, that's not my question. My question is, to track successes of interventions, the sample size should be the same, or the sample population. To understand a score of, the ISAS score in third grade, and then to see, did those same students pass in fourth grade after something has been done to change? You can only really track that if it's the same sample population. Otherwise, we're looking at two very different groups. And I, I understand that the demographics and law of large numbers probably says that maybe the groups are the same, but I, I do think there's, there's value in possibly looking at what percentage of them passed in third grade and what percentage of them passed in fourth grade? Did it go up? Did it go down? And what, what happened in between there to help us understand that? And I'm okay with keeping this monitoring report also. I don't know if it's just a second page to a monitoring or what that looks like, but it, it would be really helpful data for me to know the right questions to ask.
I mean, aren't we trying to change, though, an entire system, not just one cohort of students? And we're trying to change, that means, I mean, if, I, I'm not trying to be directive, and please kick me off as that, but, I mean, if you know that you're gonna take this test in first grade, I think our expectation would be that the staff is looking in kindergarten to prepare for the first grade, and then they're looking to prepare for second grade, to prepare for third grade, knowing that the ultimate goal is in fourth grade. I mean, I think if you start trying to do interventions for, for your students in fourth grade to achieve an ISAS score, it's over. So I think the vision behind these, this is one metric that is, this is one goal that's supposed to indicate a sea change of our whole elementary education, if that's the way I believe it to be. Please jump in.
And I would offer that the superintendent and team is looking at that cohort data and is diving into that, but we as a board need to be focused on the system level and the entire district, and what it takes for us to, to, you know, raise all the ships. And, and there's very scientific data around why we as a board should be looking at the data this way versus look, diving deeper into that cohort data. I don't know that now is, well, I don't know.
I just wanna make sure that the data that we're actually looking at is telling the story that we think the questions we're asking is getting to. It's, it's almost like giving someone a list of phone numbers and then asking how their socioeconomic status changed. The data that we're looking at is not, it's not describing, it, it's not describing how changes are impacting a population of students. It's a completely different group of students again. It's, like, I'm not, I'm, I'm okay with the monitoring report. I just think the questions don't align with the monitoring report. So either we, as a board, maybe need to ask different questions that actually align with this dataset, or the questions we're asking should align with the dataset we're being provided. But right now, we're asking very different questions to, to what's provided.
Can you give an example of how there's a misalignment? Like, so, for example, it's unfair for us to expect that there's gonna be growth in our comparing two years of students? Like, you think that's unfair? You think the system shouldn't be changing to see growth? I mean, how are we ever gonna achieve growth across the board? I'm trying to understand what would be a, a more fair question, out of curiosity.
Given this dataset, I'm, I'm not sure what a fair question would be, honestly. I, I don't think this tells us what we're asking or what our goal is intended to do. Like, I, I sent an email, I, I think a longitudinal dataset would be more valuable to be able to, and it, I only said start at third grade because that's when they start taking the exam. Ideally, it would start at first grade or earlier. Yes, and you're tracking, i- in my mind, without drawing it out, it would say incoming class of 2024, incoming class of 2025, incoming class of 2026, compared to columns with these exact same scores, but you can see over time what is actually changing. And then you can ask the question, to what attributes this change? Because that data answers that question. Right now, I think we're getting in a, in a habit of asking the question, and we're just replacing the percentage each quarter or each time we do a monitoring report and saying, to what attributes? Insert the percentage, and then insert some, some demographic information. But I, I don't know if it's really answering the questions.
So I'm gonna make a recommendation, if that's okay, listening to this conversation, and maybe separate? Because I think that there is, this is not the first time, I think you and others have just asked questions about the data and how we got to this data, and, you know, there, it's, it's multifaceted, and I think we probably could sit here all night and talk about it. And so I wonder, because I think we want closure in some regards, or maybe we want a table, however you guys wanna handle moving this particular piece forward, we've gotta all find time together in December. And, and so we, we've been trying, but maybe this is me saying, well, we're gonna meet one Tuesday in December and really talk through this, because we, we've gotta come to some resolution. So we are lockstep in what we are measuring and how we're measuring it and how we're holding Dr. Roberts accountable to it. So if it's okay with you, I'm gonna suggest that, for the purposes of tonight's discussion, if we could try to put a period at the end of the sentence, and if that means that we need to continue this at the next board meeting, we can do that. Or that we do our best to see this report through and find time that all of us are willing to commit to, to have, I think, a meatier and broader conversation than, I think, just this monitoring report. Would that be okay?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Chairman Nurse, could I just say a couple more things? Thank you. I think the way that Member Knox just mentioned, that the goal is really to change the entire system for the better and to improve outcomes for every student that the district serves, and that I think hits it on the head. I hear what Member Mayberry Mays is saying, that this is zooming in on a particular group of students and not necessarily the same group from year to year. The rationale of selecting interim goals is that they are leverage points, where it seems like, based on understanding of the goal and understanding of the current state of where students are and where the district is, that by moving those particular areas, we will see in time movement towards the goal overall, or in this case, all fourth grade students. And it's not to say that other students don't matter, or because they're not included, they're not being attended to. It's that to watch what's going on, it makes it much easier if there's focus on those particular leverage points, and it makes it easier to align the district around making significant change in adult behavior to achieve that improvement. So it, I, I think there is a tension there. I have certainly felt it as well in, in other districts and in, when I was serving as a board member. It's not that outside the focus of those goals, whether the measure or the students, it doesn't matter. It does matter, but these are the areas where the district has chosen to put its efforts and that they are predictive of the overall goal that you all have adopted as a board. And I agree with Chairman Nurse as well, that this is often an unfamiliar process, especially when new goals are set, but it is a high leverage activity for a board to engage in, to really identify how are the interim goals and the goals connected, and to practice getting to the bottom of what is the current situation and what is the strategy to improve that situation towards the goal.
Can I just offer up one last thing? The, the frustration, I think, and I don't wanna put words in Skylar's mouth, but the frustration is that I feel like we almost got to a strategic conversation here tonight. We almost did, but then we went back to a very prescriptive way of asking, a very tight way of asking questions. We can do both. We've gotta find a way to do both, and I think that's what the discussion you're, you're talking about is, but that's, that's where my frustration really is, because we started connecting dots. We have these experts here to talk to us about how are we going to put our, the end goal is here is how, where do we put our resources to make this happen? And it's not today, but it will over time. And so I, a, a, not looser conversation, but a, I think a better conversation, using our experts to help us connect the dots and see where we can be helpful as a board to put those resources where they need to be. It's a good, SOFG is still a good goal. It's still a good structure. It's just, we're not quite there yet.
I agree. I love how everybody is just setting us up for Rosie and I to come back to you and see if you are willing to dedicate a day of your time to do the SOFG governance conversations that we've been desperately trying to have. So duly noted, and I'm gonna send it back to you, Ms. Knox, for next steps. And thank you.
Does anyone have any other questions?
I, just, point of clarification, under what's going well, you have less overall summer learning loss, and then you have, under what's not going well on page four, summer learning loss. And you reference two assessments in what's going well, and one of those same assessments in what's not going well with regards to, so can you help me understand why summer learning loss is something that's going well and not going well?
Less overall summer learning loss in what's going well. And less, less overall summer learning loss with the CBM reading. And your, the auto clarifying question is in what is not going well? Be helpful to have a point of clarification about the question that you're asking, because I just looked at the two areas you just highlighted.
I just, I can't imagine that they should be in both, that should be in both columns. It's either going well or it's some, and from what I heard of our conversation, summer learning loss is something that's not going well. So that first bullet point probably needs to be struck from the report.
That's correct.
Any other questions? Okay, board.
I, I do wanna ask, so are we going to bring this back prior to winter, or is the recommendation?
recommendation that, um, this is going to go on consent the next board meeting? And then the next time we discuss this will be in the winter?
So you would like to bring it back so that Dr. Roberts can?
I'm just asking for clarification, what the recommendation is.
I think I heard from the superintendent that he felt confident in the, that we'll be bringing this back in the winter as schedules?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, well, this concludes the monitoring process and Madam Chair, I will turn it back to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody, for, for participating. Um, so, board, I am going to suggest that we, um, grab some food, uh, and then for those, uh, here, uh, board members will stay in open session. We will take 10 minutes or less on vision or mission, and I'm just going to frame the guidance and then we will move into closed session. So with all due haste, I'm going to encourage you to follow Rosie and go get some food and come on back. Do you have those handouts? And I'll get those handouts going. Okay.
I don't know if I need to be, we are recording this, right? Hey, Kyle, are you in there? Oh, he's in there. Okay. You didn't get any of that stuff where I was talking about male deodorant, did you? Okay. Um, by the way, I, you and I, I, nevermind, I'm going to tell you afterwards. Okay, team. So it, I, I want to cover this. So I want to take you back to a long, long, long time ago when we, July 9th, when, uh, so Skylar, you weren't even on the board by then, were you? You were here, sorry. Okay. Oh, okay, this, this year, July, so just a few months ago. Okay, got it. Um, we had a conversation, Dr. Roberts and I attempted to tag team and facilitate it, and the goal was really to just get some feedback from all of you, uh, in a way that would inform the vision and the mission. I will say that I think between the goals established by the board and the directionally correct feedback that Doc, or the feedback that Dr. Roberts got, he felt like he had enough to be moving forward with a strategic plan, but it's still incumbent on us to, um, to kind of codify the vision and the mission. So the, the first thing that we did, we met, I took that feedback and sent it to, um, the Strategic Communications Firm. Um, this obviously was, there's a fair amount of months in between to see so. Um, and they sent back a first draft of the vision and mission. Dr. Roberts, Maria, and I looked at it and we gave some initial guidance based on the feedback that was given to us by you. And this was sent to me today, uh, the draft vision and the draft mission. I am going to recommend for the sake of time that everybody take this home and process it and think about it and that on the 26th, we will aim to finalize it. I'm actually, if you're open to it, going to suggest sending, I might send like Survey Monkey or something, just something to gather your feedback ahead of time so we can look and see where we're aligned and where we're not, so we can spend time accordingly. What, what questions do people want to ask at this point?
I'm seeing two of each.
Mm-hmm. I think they're giving us a choice. So, um, so for, I'll just maybe quickly, so the original feedback we gave with the vision was that, um, for the most part, I think we thought it was right on. There was a word and it was the word adaptable. Um, some of you may recall in the initial session, we talked a lot about in ever-changing world and resilience and adaptability and the skills and traits necessary to be ready for jobs that we don't even know what they're going to be. And so their first capture of that word was, didn't nail it. And so it, it may or should be, um, reflected in this differently. Like I said, I haven't actually read the document yet. So, Kim, I think, um, really what I would, what I would encourage you to do is you can underline, you know, key phrases that you really like or you can, you know, I'll kind of do like three things you like, three things that you're really struggling with, three questions you have, kind of something like that in terms of approach and, um, and then we can go from there.
Yes.
Does that work for people?
Yes.
Okay, good. And then I'm happy to do individual sessions with people to talk through it.
This is your, this is all of our mission, vision?
It's our, no, it's actually, it's our, it's the board's vision. Ideally, we're aligned, right, with our superintendent and the mission, again, there's alignment.
The DMPS, okay.
But yes, thank you. It's not the board, is that what you're asking? It's not the board's vision person, like, yes.
I think this is so exciting. So thank you for leading this charge and I think this is a much-needed change and, uh, the vision sets the tone for everything, so very excited to get this done.
Can I ask you a question of Dr. Roberts? How will you use this? Will you use this as an anchor every day or is this a, like, we like this, this is kind of a, you know, a guard post or, or is this like, we're making a decision today? How does it align with this?
100% Patrick and team. Um, one of the most, uh, sort of passionate aspects of the work I do in leadership is ensuring that the mission and vision of the organization, um, are living statements that truly embody the work we do. So for example, um, the superintendent's executive cabinet, uh, we spent probably about maybe two and a half to three months iterating on our own vision statement because one did not exist prior to my coming on board. And one way that we keep it alive is we convene once a week for three hours. At the beginning of every single cabinet meeting, every executive cabinet member must share one action they've taken in the past seven days that aligns to the mission that we've set for ourselves. So we keep it alive. It's not just an auto pleasant sounding rhetoric that you just have on a wall. Yeah, so thank you. I love the question.
Any other questions? If not, I'm going to recommend that we go into closed session and for us to be ready to do that, we need the recorder and we need the motion for closed session. Kim, do you have that? See that you're a standard bearer for the closed session motion.
I move that the board, pardon me, move into closed session by affirmative public vote of either two-thirds of the members of the body or all the members present at the meeting in accordance with Iowa Code Section 21.5, subsection one, subsection I, to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless or irreparable injury to that individual's reputation and that individual requests a closed session.
And prior to asking for a motion, or we have a motion, I just want to note that Ms. Alonso is not present at this point. Uh, we have a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Marterano and a second by Mr. Dix. Ms. Rios, could you please take the vote?
Yes.
Ms. Campos?
Yes.
Mr. Dix?
Yes.
Ms. Knox?
Yes.
Ms. Marterano?
Yes.
Mr. Mayberry Mace?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes. The motion passes six to zero. Uh, we need to close.
The door.
The door.